Council regular meeting for Monday, September 21st, 2020. Tonight, we have Assistant City Manager Kyle Stannert acting as our city clerk. So, city clerk, would you like to do the roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Robinson?
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse?
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Robertson?
Present.
Councilmembers on?
Here.
Councilmember Stokes?
Here.
So, we lost three great people in the last week, locally, nationally, and internationally. And tonight, I'd like to give an opportunity for Councilmember Stokes to speak about Mr. Bill Gates Jr., Councilmember Robertson to speak about Ruth Bader Ginsburg, and I will speak about Ed Pepel. Councilmember Stokes?
Yes, I'm very pleased to talk about an icon of the Pacific Northwest, and particularly Seattle and our area and our region. It is 94 years, the late Bill Gates Jr. built a reputation for social activism, philanthropy, and pursuing justice. As a lawyer and the father of Microsoft co-founder Bill Gates Jr., he spent 13 years helping his son in managing the building Melinda Gates Foundation, starting the foundation's work in global health and guiding the foundation's major investments in human services, education, and culture in the Pacific Northwest. Bill Gates Jr. was born in Bremerton and remained in the Puget Sound area for most of his life, creating community and connections through leadership in a variety of civic organizations. He also served in the U.S. Army, and he earned his law degree from University of Washington and began his legal career as a part-time city attorney for Bremerton. He was later a founding partner of a firm that would become K&amp;L Gates, one of the world's largest law firms and one that worked closely with the region's tech industry in its early days. Gates founded the Technology Alliance and helped to boost technology employment in Washington. He also supported his alma mater, the University of Washington, by serving as a UW region for 15 years. The university has selected him as UW's alumnus summa laude dignatus in recognition of his service to and insatiable love for UW. The impact of his work can be felt everywhere, including here in Bellevue. In a recent tribute, Bill Gates Jr. said of his father, who passed away September 14th, at his home in Hood Canal, "His sincerity, humor, approachability, and thoughtfulness won him legends of admirers and made him highly effective in his work and his civic and philanthropic endeavors." Bill Gates Jr., rest in peace, and thank you for all you've done for the Puget Sound area, particularly Bellevue, Seattle, and the region. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Councilmember Robertson?
You, Mayor. Last Friday, as the sun set at Rosh Hashanah, Jewish New Year, America lost a legal, cultural, and notorious Titan with the passing of U.S. Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. She was a trailblazer, only the second woman to be appointed to the U.S. Supreme Court, and as one of her colleagues put it, "tough as nails." She also got along very well with her colleagues, whether she was on the other side of a vote with them or not. She and Justice Scalia, who probably never voted together, were very close lifelong friends. She was only one of nine women to graduate in her law school class of more than 500. She became a professor at Rutgers University School of Law and later became the first woman to be hired with tenure at Columbia University School of Law. From 1973 to 1980, she served as general counsel for the ACLU, and she founded the Women's Rights Project. In 1980, President Jimmy Carter appointed her to the U.S. Court of Appeals for the District of Columbia Circuit. During her time with the Circuit, she also made rulings that helped women be able to have credit in their own name without having to have a husband on their credit and other things that really brought women's rights forward. In 93, President Bill Clinton nominated her to the U.S. Supreme Court, and she was only the second woman appointed, and she was confirmed by a 96 to 3 vote. That was the year I graduated from law school, and I distinctly remember her being nominated and being so impressed by her record. She was and will continue to be an inspiration to many of us in the legal field, as well as many, many young women. It's important that we recognize her contributions to the nation's, her public service, and her dedication to women's rights. I will very much miss seeing her on the court and listening to her rulings. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'm going to speak about Mr. Ed Pepel. On September 14th, we lost a coaching phenom in our region. He had a 49-year coaching career, winning more games than any other coach in state, with a history of a 952 to 306 record. He is famous for boys' basketball in Mercer Island, winning four state championships, but he also coached girls for years. Ed, or Coach as we knew him, influenced my life as well. He was my tennis partner and my opponent. When we played together, we won, and when I played against him, he won. He took up tennis in his 70s and won not because he was the fastest or hardest hitter. He was the smartest player, and he played without an ego. I knew that Coach, or I know that Coach will continue to influence generations of athletes with the skills he taught and exemplified: excellent sportsmanship, respect for the opponent, an incredible drive to win, and the ability to play smart. Coach will remember you. Okay, so, we are on to approval of the agenda, and I believe we have an amendment. Deputy Mayor?
We do. I move to approve the agenda, amended to add one item under the report of the city manager related to the Maidenbauer Center accreditation, and to remove item 12A, which is Resolution 9821, which should be brought back at a future meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So, we're on to oral communications. City clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one individual signed up to speak tonight, and then I'd also just like to remind everybody, because we do have a number of attendees, many of them who are signed up to speak for the public hearing, so they've already been instructed this, but while the council always has time and room to hear from anyone on any subject, on nights when we have a public hearing, we can't double dip. So, no speaking on the topic for the public hearing during oral communications. Tonight's topic is on the budget. So, I think everybody knows that, but wanted to add that just in case we had anybody who thought this would be the time that will be coming, and just a few items on the agenda. So, our one speaker for oral communication tonight is Vishnu Manjupudi. And I am going to unmute you. I saw you on here earlier. There we go. Vishnu, can you hear us, and can you unmute?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Perfect. Then your time starts now.
Dear Bellevue City Council, thank you so much for putting time, effort, and work to maintain order during these difficult times. I am Vishnu Manjupudi, a seventh grader at Odl Middle School. I live at 1204 150th Avenue Northeast, Bellevue, Washington, 98007. For the past two years, I have been a part of the Bellevue Youth Link Climate Action Committee, working to achieve sustainability goals and milestones. I personally care about the climate because it will severely impact the lives of both my generation and future generations on our planet. Budget allocation specifically play a critical role in future climate action. The COVID-19 pandemic has taught us important lessons about safety, health, and well-being that can be applied to climate action. Since COVID-19 is a respiratory virus, people with underlying respiratory conditions are impacted more severely than the general population. A lack of good air quality in certain regions due to both greenhouse gas emissions and the smoke caused by recent wildfires, which have been exacerbated by climate change, can lead to and harm the development of respiratory ailments in many communities. It is thus essential to divert a portion of our budget to addressing climate change. The COVID-19 crisis has also shown us the importance of collaboration. We, as a city, must work together with other communities in order to minimize the harmful impacts of climate change in the coming years. This is a reason why I'm sincerely thankful that you signed the K-4C as well. Collaboration among cities will always be more successful than individual efforts. This is also another reason why we ourselves should take action. If we begin to reduce emissions significantly through budget allocations, other communities nationwide will soon follow suit, helping us both best address this issue nationally and globally. Thus, we should add climate change to the list of budget priorities in order to address this issue, to stimulate other communities to do the same, and mitigate the devastating future impacts that it will bring. Thank you for hearing my request for action. Have a great day.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Stannert, is there anybody else in the eves that might want to speak at the public comment?
There is no other signups for oral communications. If there is anyone who's signed in who has a topic other than budget, including climate change if it's about budget, you can raise your hand using the Zoom feature, or if you're joining by phone, press star nine now. Mayor, I do not see anyone else raising their hand to speak.
Okay, thank you very much. So, we're on to report of our city manager, Mr. Miyake.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I have one item this evening under the city manager's report to report on. I wanted to share some good news about our partners at the Maidenbauer Convention Center. Last week, it was announced that the Maidenbauer Center earned the Global BioRisk Advisory Council, also known as G-BAC Star Facility Accreditation, becoming the first convention center in the Washington State to earn this accreditation. The accreditation is awarded by G-BAC, the leading trade association for the cleaning industry worldwide. This accreditation is provided to facilities who demonstrate a well-established and maintained cleaning, disinfection, and infectious disease prevention program with well-trained professionals and clear documentation of cleaning process. The G-BAC director recently quoted in a press release saying, "By taking this important step to pursue G-BAC, Maidenbauer Convention Center has received third-party validation that it follows strict protocols for bio-risk situation, thereby demonstrating its preparedness and commitment to operating safety." This initiative really demonstrates for our community how important health and safety is for the team and leadership at the convention center, and is an important step in welcoming gatherings back in this community facility. Special thanks to Tim Carr, the executive director of the Convention Center Authority, Jeremy Heinrich, the center's facility and security manager, and the full team at the Convention Center for pursuing this important work. So, just please join me in congratulating the Maidenbauer Convention Center for this prestigious award. Thank you, Mayor.
So, I believe Councilmember on, you are the liaison, council liaison for the Convention Center. Would you like to add anything to that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would say that this continues to show just the world-class organization that our Maidenbauer Center and Convention Center is, that they pursued excellence in making sure that we have a clean space for the community to come and pursue the accreditation so that we can show that as the economy reopens, that our Convention Center is a safe place for people to come for conventions, and I look forward to the day when we can reopen the space broadly for conventions.
Yeah, it sounds like it's going to happen sooner than later.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, on to the consent calendar. Do we have an motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
There you go. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that passes. So, now we have our public hearing. So, Mr. Miyake, are you going to tee that up, or is that? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, I will go ahead and tee this up. Tonight is the second of three public hearings on the 2021 to 2022 operating budget and the 2021 to 2027 capital investment program plan. And just by way of background, state law requires that the council hold one public hearing to gather inputs from residents and other stakeholders. You know, for purposes of ensuring there's ample opportunity for the public feedback in the budget, the city of Bellevue holds three versus one budget public hearings, two before the preliminary budget is presented to you, and one afterwards. As discussed on June 22nd, the next biennial budget will face very challenging choices with impacts to COVID-19 on the economy. Tonight is another opportunity for the public to provide input into my preliminary budget in advance of scheduled delivery to the council in October. The last time a public hearing was before you was July 28th, and joining this evening is Kay Lou, Assistant Director for the Finance and Asset Management Department for Brief Staff Report. So, I'll turn it over to Kay Lou. Kay?
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and city manager. Tonight is the second of three public hearings for the 2021-2022 operating budget and the 2021 through 2027 capital investment program plan. As the city manager prepares his preliminary budget, the city welcomes the public input and feedback. On the screen, this budget major milestone calendar shows you that this year's budget process started a little bit later than usual due to the impacts of COVID-19. The initial budget workshop was held on June 22nd, where council was briefed on the estimated impacts of COVID-19 on the upcoming biennial budget. Then we held the first public hearing in July. Tonight is the second public hearing. The city manager will present his preliminary budget to you in October. The final public hearing for budget is scheduled for November, prior to the adoption of the budget, which is scheduled in December of 2020. The final public hearing will include preliminary budget-related materials for public review in advance. In addition to the public hearings, there are other opportunities for the public to engage. We noted all the ways for the public to engage on this slide. With that, I will turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Kay. So, the purpose of this public hearing is to provide an opportunity for a council to listen to organizations and to the community. We will have our time to comment in October, when the city manager presents it to us at our meeting then. So, with that, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Stannert, do we have people who would like to speak?
Yes, Mayor, and I will, a couple of things, quick before we go through the list. There are 14 individuals who are signed up to speak tonight. I don't see all of them online quite yet, but maybe as time goes on, they'll join us. Couple of things to note in the public hearing notice, it also instructs individuals on how to submit comments officially to the budget office and/or the city clerk. There was four communications received, and those were in your desk packet this evening, which was delivered via email at 5:22, if that helps you do an inbox sort. Those have also been provided to the city manager, as well as the budget office for their feedback, to consider his feedback as the budget moves forward. Secondly, David Plummer signed up for the public hearing. He did notify the clerk's office earlier this afternoon that he would be unable to participate in the meeting itself, but he did ask that we note that he did send a message to council late last week with his feedback, so you may consider that as well, and that has also been shared with the budget office and the city manager. With that, we do have 13 remaining, with Mr. Plummer removed from the list. The first speaker is Dave Hamilton. Mr. Hamilton, I have unmuted you, can you, or allowed you to unmute yourself? Can you say hello, and then after that, we will start the timer.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, council members. My name is Dave Hamilton, and I live in the Tam O Shaner neighborhood. My address is 17915 Northeast 19th Place, Bellevue, 98008. I was a member of the task force created by the Bellevue Chamber and Bellevue Downtown Association that was responsible for creating the letter that is part of your packet tonight. The letter speaks to the tremendous value that organizations' members put on being a part of the Bellevue community. Tonight, I would like to take a minute or two to add some personal comments. I moved to Bellevue with my family almost 50 years ago. Aside from a few years off and on, I've lived here since. Five of my kids were born at Overlake Hospital, and all six have attended Bellevue schools for all or most of their educations. While my business has morphed and moved over the years, I started it in Bellevue over 30 years ago. Like many, I've seen our community grow and mature. Navigating through the process has been a challenge. The community has continually met the challenge and have much to be proud of and thankful for. Part of what makes Bellevue exceptional is that no matter whether you work, live, play, go to school, or all of the above here, there is a draw to do it here. Bellevue has a contagious sense of community that permeates life in our city. I've seen it in the neighborhoods, amongst my colleagues, interacting with city staff, and time and again from our council members. We value community, and we don't add qualifiers to how we define community. When I look around, I see community members, not smaller groups that make up the whole. My sense is this is a common view. COVID-19 requires council to view the budget through a whole different lens. Effectively dealing with the pandemic is the key to minimizing the severity of our budget woes and lessening the impact of revenue shortfalls as much as possible. In the next budget, we have to be creative in how we maintain our critical investments and strategic in where we find savings. It's not an easy job, but council and staff have shown they are up to it. From my viewpoint, we have the exact right team in place. I want to borrow a couple of lines from the city's affordable housing strategy with slight modifications that I think should inform how we respond to the challenges of COVID-19 on our current budget process. It's vital that the community understand this is a crisis affecting everyone: residents, employees, businesses, seniors, families, the entire community. And the actions we take require support and involvement from everyone. This will require a sustained effort by the entire community in achieving the goals of the strategy that gets us through this challenging time. Thank you all for your efforts. I know the entire community is with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton, and I think the timer had an issue there, but we'll get it on the next one. The second speaker is Court Olson, who I don't see. Mr. Olson, if you're online, can you either raise your hand using Zoom or using star nine if you're on your telephone? All right, I don't see Mr. Olson. We'll move on, and then, Mayor, if it's okay with you, I'll do a check at the end of the list as well.
Yeah.
The next speaker then is Albert Rosenthal. Albert, I see you. Can you hear us? Can you unmute?
Am I unmuted now?
You are. Thank you. And as you, and when you're ready, please start speaking, and the timer will start.
All right, I'm Al Rosenthal. I live at 4640 161st Avenue Southeast, Bellevue. And I'm calling in today because I do not think you should defund the police. Police are not racist. The graph that I sent you from Bloomberg News is why I think that the vast majority of police are not racist. The article accuses the police of being racist based on the fact that the police per capita kill African-Americans at more than twice the rate of white Americans. But what the article does not look at is that Asian-Americans are killed per capita by police at well under one-half the rate of white Americans. The reason for the low Asian-American death rate is not that they, the reason for low Asian-American death rate is that they commit well under half the crime rate of white Americans per capita, not because police are racist in favor of Asians. On a very rare occasion, the police use too much force. What gets a person killed by police almost always starts with resisting arrest. You should never let what happened with the looting in Bellevue Square happen again anywhere in Bellevue. The police should never be told to stand down and allow looting and vandalism. Looting and vandalism should be stopped by any means possible. Protesters have the right to protest, but they do not have the right to shut businesses down. If they want to protest, let them protest in a park where they're not hurting hard-working, tax-paying businesses. There is no constitutional right to protest in the street. Constitution allows you the right to protest, but the authorities can enforce you to protest in a park and not destroy businesses. Businesses are paying your taxes, not the protesters. By allowing the looting to hurt businesses, you've lost some of your tax base at a time when you really need revenue. You need to look at cutting spending first, not raising taxes. I don't know what the numbers are for the city, but I recently looked up what the numbers are for the state, and from 1980, $2,017 for the state, the state was spending $4,600 per capita. And in 2017, in $2,017, they were spending $10,000 per capita. The state pretty much doubled per capita in their inflation-adjusted spending. Wouldn't be surprised if the city isn't the same way. So, when you start looking at your budget, look at where you can cut first if you've done the same thing as the state has. Thank you.
All right, and I see Mr. Olson has joined us. Court, can you go ahead and unmute? We'll make sure you can...
Yes, I'm unmuted.
Perfect, all right. So, when you're ready, start speaking, and your time will start.
Very good, thanks for having me, and thanks to the council for voicing support over the past several months on our climate action concerns, and for signing just last week, or at least making the motion to sign the K-4C commitment letter update. In these times of COVID, we know that our budget constraints are going to be significant. And yet, we also know, and I'll remind you, that the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change and the United Nations has told the world that we really need to cut our greenhouse gas emissions in half by 2030 if we're going to avoid a runaway global warming, and that's consistent with the K-4C commitment. But that's going to be a tough lift to accomplish, and we really need to get a quick start on it, and therefore, we've got to put money in the budget to accommodate that now. COVID will pass, but the looming catastrophe of climate change won't pass, and it'll be long-lasting if we don't do something quickly. Other cities in the world are doing it. Bellevue could be a local leader. I've sent all of the council members some information on just one city in Europe that's doing it dramatically, and we could certainly do something similar here. There's really not much funding needed for planning a complete and comprehensive climate action plan. In fact, if we could get the attention of existing staff focused on climate action planning and implementation, we may not even need to add much, if any, additional money in the budget. But it will take a significant amount of staffing effort to get a climate action plan finalized and then implemented, and I'm hoping that you and the council and the city manager, Mr. Miyake, will make every effort to get funding in the budget so that we can execute a climate action plan that is comprehensive and is robust, and that is going to be implemented in this next budgetary period. So, thanks very much for hearing me, and let's make sure Bellevue becomes the leader that we all know we could be. Thanks for your time.
The next speaker is Noel Young. You can unmute, can we hear from you, and then when you're ready, go ahead and start speaking?
Yeah. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, great, okay. Thank you so much for having me, Bellevue City Council. Thanks for hosting this and allowing me to speak. I want to talk about defunding the police. Right now, violence is on the rise across America due to many factors. According to the New York Times, "The pandemic has led to a nationwide rise in domestic violence, child abuse, and pet abuse. I argue this is reason enough to not divert funds from the police department." I argue this is reason enough to not divert funds from the police department. In efforts to boycott the police, CHAZ was created earlier this year. Organizers of the Autonomous Zone did not allow policemen or any form of civil authority in. They were self-policed. The experiment failed, it embarrassed Seattle's leadership, and the negligence and passivity of the city's leadership is appalling. Because of what this all led to, the father of Horace Lorenzo Anderson is currently suing the Seattle, City of Seattle for three billion. This is evidence of what happens when the police force is weak or not backed up and supported by their city's leadership. Justthenews.com published an article on September eighteenth titled "After Slashing Police Funding, Minneapolis City Council Members Decry Insuing Crime Spike." Their decision to cut funding was negligent, and the people of Minneapolis are paying for it right now. Their decision was not based on any facts or evidence, and it is backfiring on them right now as we meet. I understand that no policeman or no police department is perfect, and I would encourage community leaders to engage with their police departments and call for more transparency and accountability. I understand that a big part of why we're having this meeting is because of dissatisfaction being expressed in police departments. However, defunding the police would not be treating any root problems, it would be counterproductive, and it would hurt Bellevue. On a side note, I advocate for there to be recruitment of more women police so that they may be more readily available available to be on site in domestic violence situations involving women and children, as well as to be there for sex-trafficked victims or in any other situation where it would be beneficial to have a woman present. I strongly urge the Bellevue City Council to not divert any funds or resources away from our police department. Because of the current situation in the world, and particularly in our city, we should be finding ways to build up and strengthen our police force by giving more training, development, and support. Please, at the very least, do not divert funds from the people who protect Bellevue. They now need our support more than ever, and we need need their support more than ever as well. This is not primarily about the jobs of policemen, this is about the safety of Bellevue's people. Something that needs to be considered also in the discussion of climate change is that they were finding arsonists in Washington, Oregon, and California who were setting fires in fields. It may be that they are Antifa members, but that's still being speculated. This needs to be investigated more before attributing the fires to climate crisis. Thank you.
All right, our next speakers are coming as a pair, but first is Matt Jack. And Matt, can you go ahead and unmute? And then, before the timer starts, I do have a question. Are you and Mr. Johnson sharing three minutes, or are you speaking sequentially?
Speaking sequentially.
Wonderful, then, Mr. Jack, your time starts as soon as you start talking.
Thank you, Kyle. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Matt Jack. I'm the Director of Public Policy for the Bellevue Downtown Association, located at four hundred one hundred eighth Avenue Northeast, Bellevue, Washington, nine eight zero zero four. I'm here this evening with the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce to present our joint message regarding the challenges and opportunities facing the city's budget. You know, please take a moment to look at your packet to reference our letter that was submitted this morning. I'm kind of doing a tag-team combo with my peer in this process, Mr. Chris Johnson, and I'll be providing sort of, I'll be leveraging my remarks to talk about our work. So a little brief background on the work that's supporting the letter before you. We gathered a group of stellar business and community leaders who cared deeply about Bellevue to examine these challenges, and we worked really hard over a period of three weeks to identify, identify the issues, and then sort of identify some solutions to help guide us on the right track. That work produced a number of recommendations that were vetted by the Chamber's Policy Council and the BDA Board, and throughout that process, we had multiple staff check-ins to help guide us, to help inform us of the challenges and help prepare this work. So kudos to city staff. Thank you so much for, you know, being available and transparent about the issues and guiding us. So what I do want to note about this, the letter, is that there is an overwhelming theme, and it's called "Keep Bellevue Strong," and we want to articulate that we must support resiliency so that Bellevue is positioned to recover. And more specifically, ensure Bellevue remains financially stable while maintaining current levels of core services and continuing capital investments that'll add capacity necessary to support our projected growth. The letter is broken into two categories. One is covering investment priorities, you know, operations and capital programs that we deem necessary in order to maintain resiliency and help position us in bridging the gap, a section, a toolbox, you could say, for you to reference when working on the preliminary budget. So at this moment, I would like to end my remarks and pass the virtual mic to Chris Johnson, but close by saying thank you for your leadership and attention.
Kyle, you're unmute.
Mayor, what would I do without you? Thank you. Mr. Johnson, you're up next, and you can go ahead and unmute and confirm that you're able to speak, and once you are, we'll let you start. Chris, are you able to unmute? All right, he's not responding, and we're going to give him one more minute here, and then we'll move to the next speaker and come back to Mr. Johnson. All right, so we'll go next then to Mackenzie Toomey. Mackenzie, can you hear me?
Hi.
Great, so when you're ready, start speaking, and your time will start.
Hello and good evening, council members. My name is Mackenzie Toomey. I'm fifteen years old, and I'm a sophomore at the International School. My address is One Crescent Key, Bellevue, Washington, nine eight zero zero six. I am so thankful for this opportunity to speak to you today. Ever since I was in middle school, I have held a particular care for the well-being of our world. In this, I have found myself changing my family's habits and enjoy enjoining organizations like Sustainability Ambassadors and the Bellevue Youth Council's Climate Action Team, which helped me learn more about our human impact on the world. Now I am working on publishing blog articles to further our community's understanding and pulling in schools to take action for climate. I would like to thank all of you for your dedication and commitment to our city and for the incredible work that you all have done to keep our community safe throughout this pandemic. Thank you for your work thus far with allocating a portion of the budget for climate action planning, and thank you once again for the opportunity to speak to you today. Climate action planning will be extremely important as we work towards economic recovery from Covid nineteen, because we have a unique opportunity to build back better. We have a chance to set up programs and incentives that bring about more green jobs, pollution management, and climate equity. Rapidly shifting circumstances allows Bellevue the opportunity to shape our own future and aim towards important goals like taking action for our climate. When the rebuilding begins, the city has to be ready to help build our city back cleaner, greener, and with a smaller carbon footprint. Making these changes will increase community health, increase the number of good jobs, and will keep our air cleaner, as events like last week are bound to happen more the farther we progress without leading-edge climate action. This summer, I have been studying what sustainability really looks like in relation to climate. I've been excited to learn about the many innovations and programs cities are using to make a difference, and I want to see them happening here in my city. Please ensure that Bellevue is aiming for comprehensive climate action planning in our city budget. Thank you.
Thank you, and it looks like Mr. Johnson is now unmuted. Chris, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Kyle. Thank you very much, and thank you for your patience. I thought I had mastered the art of Zoom participation, but apparently not. I am ready to begin. Mayor Robinson and council members, thanks for the opportunity to share with you the budget priorities of the Chamber BDA Joint Budget Task Force, and thanks to Matt Jack for his excellent summary of our process, and perhaps more importantly, our optics. We know that we are all in uncharted territory when it comes to economic and revenue forecasting, and we really don't know what our economy will look like six months from now, much less in another twelve to eighteen months. That is why our goal is to provide you with flexibility, both in terms of spending.
Mr. Johnson, looks like we we may have lost his connection. We're going to give him a minute to to bounce back, and I'm going to call the next speaker, which is Charles Lando. Mr. Lando, can you hear me?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead when you're ready.
Okay, thanks. My name is Charles Lando, and I live in Bellevue on One Thirty Place Northeast. I'd like to speak briefly tonight about maintaining funding for our police department in Bellevue. If we want to know where defunding the police will get us, we have only to look across the lake in Seattle. A few years ago, my kids told my wife and myself that they have no interest in going to Seattle again ever. From their perspectives, it's dangerous and scary. Before the pandemic, I commuted to an office downtown for work for three years. On more than one occasion, I felt that my safety was at risk. In addition, on my walk to and from the bus stop, I could count on seeing people sleeping in doorways, as well as used needles and sometimes human waste on the sidewalks and streets. There are many factors why this situation exists in Seattle. There is no doubt that an important one is that Seattle doesn't support its police department. Police officers know that criminals who are arrested will almost always be released immediately. It's not unusual to hear about violent crimes committed in Seattle by perpetrators who have been arrested literally dozens of times previously. The police know they can't count on support from the city government, so it's not worth it for them to try to enforce the laws. And this isn't just a personal observation. The situation was thoroughly documented in a video called "Seattle is Dying" by Como News, which can be seen online. There are a number of reasons why my family chooses to live in Bellevue. An important one is that in the past, we've been able to count on a professional police force to help maintain a safe and clean city. A few years ago, I was involved in a vendor-bender with someone who couldn't speak English, and in addition, there was some question about whether their insurance had expired. I was impressed that the police officer here in Bellevue involved treated us both fairly and with respect. I hope the city will continue to fund and support our police department. Defunding the police department will be a huge step backward for the city and will put us all at risk. Thank you.
All right, and I think we have Mr. Johnson back. I'm going to promote you again. Chris, can you unmute? We're going to give you another shot here. I think this is indicative of the times we're living in. All right, still working on it, so I'm going to move forward to Denny Andrews. Denny, can you? Are you able to join us?
Ah ha. Hello, can you, can you hear me?
We sure can, so when you're ready, go ahead and speak.
Well, thank you very much for the time given me this evening. My name is Denny Andrews. I've been a Bellevue resident for about forty-five years. I'm an ex-airforce officer, retired businessman. I've written a couple of Western books that have been published by Avalon out of New York, and both my wife and I are graduates of the University of Washington. Having said all that, I want to come out very strongly against any kind of defunding for the police department. All we have to do is look at areas like Seattle, Portland, New York, Chicago, Minneapolis, and Buffalo and Kenosha to put it more in perspective of Bellevue. Passing any kind of defunding is, I think, viewed as a weakness, not just in funding, but in fact, in resolve in Bellevue itself. It puts Bellevue as a target for demonstrations, and the demonstrations themselves are, I guess, all right, but it's always the anarchy that inevitably follows. All you have to do is take a look at the demonstrations we had, along with the ones in Seattle, and you'll see the same people that showed up on video. I don't believe for an instant that any savings or defunding would be returned to the taxpayer, pardon me if that sounds a little cynical. The savings are really an issue. You could look at the roads and parks and put projects out on bid. Now, who hasn't seen about six people standing around in the road when they're talking and not doing much work? I think defunding police is simply a political statement, one which does not benefit the law-abiding taxpayer or anyone else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, I see you unmuted, and I think we've got technology licked. Would you like to take, take your turn?
Yes, thank you very much for your patience, Kyle, and your forbearance. Mayor Robinson and council members, thanks for the opportunity to share with you the budget priorities of the Chamber BDA Joint Budget Task Force, and thanks to Matt Jack for his excellent summary of our process, and more important, our optics. We know that we are in uncharted territory when it comes to economic and revenue forecasting, and we really don't know what our economy will look like six months from now, much less in another twelve or even eighteen months. That is why our goal is to provide you with flexibility, both in terms of spending priorities and how to pay for those priorities. Let's take a look at the operating budget. First of all, we ask you to continue investments in Covid nineteen response and economic recovery, maintain current levels of funding for police and fire services, and support health and human services from members of our community who are struggling to meet basic needs. On the capital side, traffic is light now, but it will be back. This is the time to invest in mobility projects that will enable us to accommodate the growth in employment and population, which we know is coming. Our letter contains a list of investments that will help us get there. How do we bridge the gap between proposed expenditures and revenue? Cutting core services now will be difficult to restore in future biennia. However, we caution against relying too heavily on a capital to operating transfer, at least to support one-time expenditures. Here's what we do support. Reduce the ending fund balance over the short term with a plan to restore in future biennia. That's what it's there for. Consider delaying the opening of Fire Station Ten by two years only in order to defer associated staffing costs. Explore the feasibility of an inter-fund loan from the Utility Reserve Fund. And while the cost of money is low, use long-term debt capacity to stretch out the cost of capital projects over the benefit streams of those same projects. Act a one percent property tax increase for twenty twenty-one to twenty-two, and evaluate the use of bank capacity as needed. These are just a few of the creative tools available to preserve core services and invest in our future without unduly burdening businesses and other taxpayers during an economic downturn. Thanks, and we look forward to working with you on final adoption and during the mid-buy, which will be here before we know it.
All right, and our next speaker is Marlene Meyer. Marlene, can you go ahead and unmute and say hello?
Hello.
Perfect, when you're ready, go ahead and start speaking, and your time will start.
Thank you so much. My name is Marlene Meyer. My address is twenty-four oh eight, one hundred and thirty-first place, northeast in Bellevue, of course, and I have been in Bellevue as a citizen and educator for over twenty-one years and seen the growth, just very amazing and impressive growth of our city. What has been a concern for me is that, I sent you a couple letters about this, actually in the comment letters, that I grew up in California, in the Silicon Valley area, and saw the same type of fast, amazing growth because of the technology field. And I really, you know, gained a lot from that growth, and yet, I also saw the negative environment that developed from that, the pollution from transportation cars and so forth. And it was sad to see a lovely city that I grew up in with orchards and so forth, that the city didn't plan for watching carbon output, if you will, in the city. And that is something that I've seen in other cities. In fact, I'm calling you, this was important enough for me. I'm in a city in California right now that was developed around oil, large oil companies, and not developed with the environment in mind. And I was appalled to be in this city because it's just it's just, I hate to be blunt, but it's really an ugly city. And then adding on to that, all of the COVID issues and the fires and so forth that have come through, it's a very difficult city to be in. They, I don't know the whole history, did not plan, it appears, to take care of their issues. So I am speaking to you today to say, don't wait. Take some assertive action. Really take a look at what we have in the budget. Be creative in some way. And I thank you, first of all, for signing the commitment letter for the K-4C. Utilize their ideas. They have also, in working with, there are several cities they're working with. In joining this, we can be, I think, creative on some of our ideas that we do. So I want to thank you for all of the work you're doing now and encourage you to be assertive in the budget and creative with it in going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Hannah Floss. Hannah, if you can go ahead and unmute.
Can you hear me?
We can. When you're ready, go ahead and start speaking.
Good evening, Mayor Robertson, Robinson, and council members. My name is Hannah Floss. I live in the Crossroads neighborhood of Bellevue. My address is 910 145th Place Northeast, 9007. I have concerns that cuts will be made to the budget in the area of human services in the face of the budget deficits. This pandemic has made life economically precarious for many Bellevue citizens, is difficult enough for people who live paycheck to paycheck during normal times. But the toll this pandemic has taken financially, emotionally, and physically on so many of us warrants increased funding to human services, not a decrease. So I ask you to please consider the least fortunate among us when you make your decisions regarding budget cuts. There are other places to make cuts that would be less impactful on the daily lives of our most vulnerable. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephen Sharkansky. Mr. Sharkansky, and there we go. Can you go ahead and unmute?
I'm mute. There we go.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. My name is Stephen Sharkansky. I am a resident of Northeast Bellevue, and I also operate a business out of my home here in the city. I'm adding my voice to support maintaining the current level of funding for the police department. I hear talk of some citizens want you to defund the police. That seems like such an absurd and irresponsible notion that it's, I'm surprised it's even being discussed, frankly, but, but here we are. One of the reasons that my wife and I chose to move to Bellevue from Seattle four years ago is because you have, you, the council and the rest of city government have a much better-led and administered city than Seattle. And one of the reasons is public safety, which comes from having a police department, which has the political support and the funding to do a proper job. So I encourage you to, to maintain that level of support in funding for our police, who are doing a wonderful job. And indeed, as the Seattle City Council moves with their foolish notion of defunding their police department, I fear that it will end up, Seattle will end up exporting some of its crime problems regionally, and that we may even need to increase the size of our police department to handle the unfortunate side effects from that. Thank you.
Our last speaker who signed up on the list tonight is Mr. John Bag. John, can you go ahead and unmute?
Yes, it's John Baggy.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Not many people get that right.
Go ahead.
I'm ready. So yes, I'm just going to speak from my heart. I don't have a written speech. I've, I've lived in Bellevue since nineteen, well, worked in Bellevue since 1976. And I've owned a home out here in the Crossroads area on 164th, just by Interlake High School and, and Sherwood Elementary. But my wife and I, you know, we raised our kids here. We've ran a business in Bellevue for twenty-five, thirty years roughly. And, and we've felt safe for just about, I mean, every, every year that we've lived here, we've never had any break-ins in our house or never feared anything. We've, this last couple of years ago, when I was at the mall, I was out in front of the jewelry store when I thought there were some angry customers slamming their hands onto the table, when it was, it was people smashing the, the accountants' blocks. And I literally was in shock watching this happen before my eyes and didn't even think to take my phone out and video it or take a picture of it. And, you know, that really kind of freaked me out. And then this summer with the, with the protesting and rioting, and now this summer too, I've had people walking through our neighborhood in our cul-de-sac for the first time in thirty-five years, where I felt not safe actually walking out on the street, but this person was staring at me walking into our cul-de-sac. And I, I think that the thought of having our police force reduced, it really, it worries me a lot. I went through a time in my business back in the seventies when we were robbed at gunpoint, and the police were there literally within a minute after he left. And I believe he was caught. It's been forty-some years since I've, you know, since that time. But I feel, I've felt safe, and every police officer that I've ever spoken with and had interaction with in this city has been more than a gentleman and a lady. And I just want to ask that you not defund the police. I'm all for training for mitigating and de-escalating in a way that is safer for the possible criminal. Obviously, police have to defend their own lives and the lives of the, of the public. But as far as taking budget money away from the police department, I think would be very detrimental to the public safety. And I, my wife and I, you know, our, have, our taxes for our, our home is more than doubled since we've been here, tripled. And the growth out here in the Crossroads area is just amazing, how many apartments and condos and just people everywhere compared to, you know, even ten years ago. So the thought of having less policemen, less police ladies on, on the street just worries me. And I would definitely encourage you to continue to, to fund the police, if not increase what you're spending on them, because our, our community deserves it. Thank you very much for your time.
Mayor, that ends the sign-up list, but I do see additional people on the meeting. If anyone who's joining us within Zoom is wishing to speak tonight, can you go ahead and use the Zoom feature to raise your hand? We've already heard from our one-phone-in caller, but the phone number's on the agenda if anyone feels moved to join. And I'll be looking for you. I will call on people in order of when their hand was raised. The first to raise their hand, and so far only, just for context, is Heidi Dean. Heidi? Oh. I think I lost her. Hold on, one more time. Heidi, can you, can you go ahead and unmute? I think you should be able to, to speak now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you very much. Sorry about that. And when you're ready, go ahead and start speaking.
Super. Thank you, Kyle. My name is Heidi Dean. I live at 11661 Southeast 56th Street in Newport Hills. So good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, staff, and my fellow Bellevue citizens. I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide input on the budget. This is the first time that I've done so. And first of all, I'd like to give a high five to Noel Young for her previous comments regarding preservation of funding for our police department. Please consider me a plus one for everything that she so eloquently said. I'd like to expand on her comments by pointing out the importance of maintaining the Bellevue Police Department's relationship with the Bellevue School District via the School Resource Officer Program. I know there's been a lot of pressure to sever that relationship, but I encourage you to think very long and hard before making budget cuts that would require discontinuation of that program. School resource officers are not the enemy. As a matter of fact, a school resource officer can quite often be the difference in an at-risk youth's life. A properly supported and trained school resource officer can help identify students who might be heading down the wrong path and help direct them to resources that can turn their life around. Does that sound like the work of a social worker? Yes, it does. And we have those in the schools. However, there are times when we need a school resource officer on campus to deal with issues that are beyond what a social worker can handle. When I was attending Ferndale High School in the mid to late eighties, the dinosaur days, we didn't have a school resource officer. We had Mr. Breadwick, a district employee who was basically the civilian equivalent of a school resource officer. Thirty-plus years later, and in a much larger city, these are different times. Our schools need more than a Mr. Breadwick, but please don't tell him that I said that. And with all that said, I'm in support of creation of affordable housing that would allow our police officers to live in the neighborhoods and the communities in which they do their police work, to be able to get to know the, the people that they are working with and have a much closer relationship. I, I think that that is important. I read a lot on some of these Facebook pages about Bellevue, old retro Bellevue and that sort of thing. And there's a lot of talk about the police officers who were able to live in their neighborhoods and their communities. There's a lot of fond memories, and I think that there was a much, there was a tight relationship there. So I encourage you to look into that. Thank you again for allowing me this time to speak.
Thank you. We have, we have one additional hand from someone named Ruth. Ruth, when I, I'm going to unmute you. If you can say your first and last name and then an address for the, the record, we'd appreciate that. And then you can start speaking.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ruth Lipscomb, and I live at 101 Cascade Key in Bellevue. And I hadn't planned to speak tonight. I was just going to listen until I heard many people saying how much they wanted the police not to be defunded. And I think that I would like to add a perspective that it's not so much the funding that we need to be looking at. It's we need to be listening to the members of our community who are maybe not as supportive and have not had as good of interactions with the police. And I would like to bring up the fact that I believe the Police Officers' Union contract expires at the end of 2020. And I would like to ask that the city not sign a new contract until after the process to review the public safety, the pledge that you city council members made recently, until after that process is finished. Because I think that there's the opportunity in that contract to perhaps put in a little bit more transparency and accountability than is currently in the police contract. And I think that that would do a lot to increase the confidence that the citizens of Bellevue have around the police and where their funding is going. So my only input is to please consider the contract as continuing to be open until after that process finishes. Thank you very much.
Last call for hands. We don't have any more for right now. All right, Mayor and Deputy Mayor, I believe that concludes the sign-up list for tonight.
Great, Kyle. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. It was great to hear from everybody, actually. Okay, we have two study session items. And I know in one of them, Ken Carlson is going to be speaking to us, and this is going to be his last meeting with the city of Bellevue. So I, I just wanted to give a little tribute to him. Fire Marshal Ken Carlson is retiring on September 30th after a thirty-six-year career in the public sector. His career started at the city of Kirkland as a building inspector and finished there as a building official and fire marshal in 2005. And he became a fire marshal for our department in 2005. And since that time, has worked tirelessly on behalf of the Bellevue community towards community risk reduction and support of fire prevention division. And in 2018, he helped lead a major update to the Bellevue's building and fire codes. He has distinguished himself as a leader throughout the city. Ken, we thank you for your dedicated service to the Bellevue community and wish you the very best in the next chapter of your life. And we got a lot of positive comments from your coworkers. So thank you very much for all you've done for our city.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson.
So, Mr. Miyaki, would you like to introduce the first study session item?
Sure, Mayor. Thank you so much. Mayor, council members, there's, as the mayor mentioned, there's two study session topics. The first one relates to the building and fire code updates as required by state law. Just by way of background, Washington state law requires updates to the construction codes to happen on a periodic basis. Tonight's staff are here to provide the council an overview of those changes to Bellevue's building code. Tonight, staff is seeking direction to bring back ordinances, amending the Bellevue construction codes and incorporating an abatement of dangerous buildings code and the Uniform Housing Code as new chapters in the Bellevue construction code, Bellevue City Code, excuse me. Joining us this evening is Mike Brennan, the Director of Development Services, Greg Schrader, a building official, Kristin Tannas, the consulting attorney in the same department, Ken Carlson, as the mayor just gave tribute to from the fire department, along with Fire Chief Jay Hagan. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over, I believe, to Mike Brennan for the beginning of the presentation. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Miyaki. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor, Newhouse, and council members. Greg, if you can put that up on full screen, thank you. And click to the next slide. So this evening, as Mr. Miyaki mentioned, and we are here seeking council's direction for the adoption of updated codes, the building and fire codes and electrical codes, including state and local amendments. We're also proposing to include language from the Uniform Housing Code and the Abatement of Dangerous Building Codes into the Bellevue City Code, as those codes are no longer published and supported. So incorporating those languages gives us the ability to amend and administer those locally. And we are also proposing a phased approach. Greg, next slide, please. So the agenda for this evening is essentially to discuss the code process, very quick overview of, as a reminder of how the state code adoption and local adoption process works. We'll talk a little bit about the, the changes to the state and model codes, so they understand what those are, although we don't have much of an ability to amend those. I will explain that as well. And then we'll discuss a few local amendments that are being proposed, and then a phased implementation date. Next slide, Greg.
And, and Mike, it looks like Greg might be locked up. I'm going to go ahead and take over, so you'll just have to prompt me for the next slide.
Thanks, Kyle. So go to slide four when you get it open. You always have to roll with the punches with the technology these days, and we're doing, you're doing great.
All right. Can you, can you see the slides?
Yes, thank you. Perfect. That's exactly where we want to be. So real quick, the, the codes, the model codes that are referred to are published nationally. They're developed in a national process. Then those codes are adopted by the state, by reference and amended by the state. The local jurisdictions are then required to adopt those codes as, as the state has determined with accompanying state amendments. And then we also, as a city, have the ability to amend those codes. So next slide, please, Kyle. So this, this graphic, to slide five, really shows that process, the national process of, of development of the codes, the international codes primarily, happens on a three-year cycle. The state then engages in a local or a statewide process to set the minimum standards for the statewide adoption. And then again, the step that we're currently at is the local adoption process, where cities and counties can adopt the codes, they can amend them, but they can't be less restrictive than the state code requirements. And if we were to amend one through, codes that affect one through four housing units, we would be required to go back to the state to get those amendments approved as well, although we're not. although we're not proposing any amendments uh to those uh sections of the code this evening. Uh, next slide, please. So I'm gonna turn it over to the Greg Schrader, the building official, who walked through uh the local adoption process uh that we've been going through. Greg?
Thanks, Mike. Um, good evening, everyone. So uh, we started the process for our local adoption back in August of two thousand nineteen, and we kicked that off with uh open houses that we sent invitations out to everyone who had obtained a permit over the last year from the city, as well as another uh a a number of stakeholder groups, which included master builders, the uh American Institute of Architects, and uh BOMA, the Building Owners and Managers Association. So we were really pleased with the turnout that we had at all three of the open houses. Sometimes it's difficult to get uh high attendance at those, but we had maybe twenty-five to thirty attendees at each of those, and um that was really a good turnout. So, of course, we're speaking this evening. We're uh hoping for, asking for council direction on possible adoption uh in the next month. And as Mike noted, we're proposing uh phase one and phase two implementation on October twenty-ninth of this year and February first of two thousand twenty-one, which matches the dates that are stipulated by the uh Wash- by Washington State law. Next slide, please. So the feedback that we received at the open houses, a great deal of it was focused on the energy code, a lot of concern from single-family builders. There's certainly uh considerable impact to uh single-family as well as commercial and multifamily. And uh a a lot of the dialogue that we had with them pertained to how they can become more involved in the state process earlier. By the time the energy code gets to us, it's already been established in the the state code, and we're mandated to adopt that. We also had some discussion about uh single-family electrical disconnect. We can talk a little bit more about that in a moment. And there were three issues that pertained to high-rise design. And I will note that of these five bullets, the uh high-rise firefighter air replenishment system is the only one of the five that is proposed for a local amendment, the codes. Next slide, please. Some of the significant changes to the national codes, some changes with the seismic design forces and ground motion. We already had a provision a a year or so ago that wood buildings can now be used, wood can be used for construction of high-rise buildings, and uh several other items that are listed here pertaining to fire sprinklers and smoke detectors. Next slide. I mentioned earlier that there are significant changes to the energy code. Um, these bullets identify some of those. The electrical readiness for gas heaters, and of course, the energy efficiency requirements continue the increase with each addition of the code. Next slide. The two, probably the two most significant changes for electrical have to do with requirements for one and two family dwellings. Uh, surge protection is now required to be built into the system. Excuse me, and an electric exterior service disconnect is required for firefighting purposes. Next slide. And Trisna will now uh comment on the next few slides.
Great, thank you, Greg. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and City Manager Miyaki. I'm Trisna Tannis, Consulting Attorney for Development Services Department. So in addition to the updates uh to the building and fire codes, we are also asking council to consider incorporation of the Abatement of Dangerous Building Code as a new chapter, twenty-three twenty, and the Uniform Housing Code as a new chapter, twenty-three twenty-two in the Bellevue City Code. As Mike mentioned, both codes are nineteen ninety-seven editions, um originally published by the International Council of Building Officials, and the city adopted these codes by reference. So subsequent to the nineteen ninety-seven editions, the International Council has not updated or published these codes. Therefore, these codes are rather outdated and contain inconsistencies and non-conformities relative to other city codes. Next slide, please, Kyle. So I want to briefly explain a little about these codes. Um, unlike uh certain building codes or menus code that ensure safety during construction and at the outset of the development, the Abatement of Dangerous Building Code and the Uniform Housing Code are two codes that the city relies upon to ensure continuing safety of buildings and structures. The Abatement of Dangerous Building Code provides for a just, equitable, and practicable method to require repair, vacation, or demolition of dangerous buildings or structures. This code then applies to all dangerous buildings defined as when there are conditions or defects that life, health, property, or safety of the public or its occupants are endangered. As noted earlier, we are then proposing to incorporate this code as a new chapter, twenty-three twenty. And um we're also including conformance and consistency amendments to bring this code to current standards and to tailor this code specific to the structure of our city codes. As an example, we are uh eliminating enforcement provisions within this abatement chapter, such as provisions related to notices, inspections, and hearings, because we already have these provisions in Chapter one eighteen or the Civil Violations Chapter. We're also making uh some changes to definitions and terminologies based on the current building code, menus code, and other codes. So as with any code amendment, our goal, of course, is to avoid any misunderstanding when we are administering or enforcing these codes. So it's important for us to avoid duplicative or conflicting provisions in favor of clarity and predictability. There is, however, no amendments that would change the substantive requirements that all property owners have to address um if they own a dangerous building. Next slide, please. As to the Uniform Housing Code, the purpose of this code is to require minimum standards for the use occupancy and maintenance of all residential buildings and structures within the city. The goal is similar to the Abatement Code, which is also to safeguard life, property, and the general welfare of the public. The proposed code amendment is to incorporate the Uniform Housing Code as new Chapter twenty-three twenty-two within the construction codes or Title twenty-three. So for this code, we are proposing amendments to bring um the provisions to current standards. As you may expect, our use and occupancy standards for residential buildings have changed since nineteen ninety-seven. But it is worth noting that, just like the Abatement of Dangerous Building Code, we are limiting proposed changes only to conformance and consistency, consistency changes. So next slide, please. With that, I'd like to turn the presentation to Ken Carlson to go over the fire code changes. Ken?
Thank you, Trisna. Um, good evening, uh, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of City Council. Uh, this slide uh highlights uh several changes that come with the two thousand eighteen fire code. Uh, the first is what's called on-demand fueling. Uh, this is a relatively new industry that had its uh has its origins in the Bay Area. Um, and basically, what happens is that uh with the use of a smartphone, um, an individual can ask for gas to be delivered to wherever their car happens to be parked. Uh, the fire code um has provisions in it that regulate where uh vehicles can be fueled, uh training that's required for personnel that are doing the fueling, and the um requirements relative to the vehicles that carry the fuel. Um, mobile food food trucks um also appear for the first time in the fire code. Uh, for Bellevue, this is not much of a change. Uh, when we adopted the two thousand and fifteen International Fire Code, uh, we implemented provisions that regulate food trucks. Um, with the proposed amendments, um, we are proposing to delete those um amendments as the fire code now adequately addresses the subject. It's also worth noting that the fire code um will now require uh what's called operational permits for uh food trucks. Um, and we've um placed uh an exception in that requirement that we would recognize reciprocity with other King County fire agencies that um issue permits for food trucks, so that they don't have to get permits um across jurisdictional lines um so long as they're in compliance with the terms of uh those permits. Uh, next slide, please, Kyle. Uh, this slide highlights the proposed amendments uh for the International Fire Code. Um, the first is in-building radio systems. Uh, for eighteen-month time period, I chaired a task force that uh included radio system operators, uh building owners, uh designers of systems, and other fire departments, um all with an eye towards two things. Uh, one is to ensure that these systems operate as well as they can in buildings, uh particularly when the PCERN radio system is implemented in in two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, and also to make sure that we um, we weren't asking uh building owners to put in systems or components of systems that really didn't add value to them. Uh, the second is uh elevator maintenance provisions. Uh, we've had some challenges over the last three-plus years with buildings, particularly those residential buildings that are served by single elevators. And uh our experience has been, uh, when these buildings had elevators, I know I would describe them as chronically out of service, that they would instruct uh elevator-dependent residents to call the fire department to transport them both in and out of the building. Um, and it took a lot of uh sitting down with the building owners to convince them that that was not the right use of uh fire department resources and to implement um certain things that are now um in the proposed uh ordinance. Basic things like notifying residents when the elevators are out of service, uh when they could expect to see them back in service, to plan for um the occurrence of elevators out of service. So what would you do um for those elevator-dependent residents when the elevators are out of service? Um, to require when you have a a residential um building that's served by a single elevator, that you have the industry's highest-level service agreement, so that you minimize the downtime of elevators when they are out of service. And last but not least is if the elevator is out of service for seventy-two hours consecutively, that alternate housing is provided for those elevator-dependent residents. So the first three um items I just um identified are all um areas that we ultimately reached agreement with on the buildings that had those uh challenges. Um, we had no authority to ask them to provide alternate housing, but um that's a highlight of those provisions. Um, and then last but not least is a firefighter air replenishment system. Uh, for those of you that were on council back in two thousand eighteen, um, you passed an ordinance that required all new high-rise buildings to have firefighter air replenishment systems. Um, as we've had time to think through um the logistics of those systems, we determined that we needed to make some changes. So um, there's enough changes that we're repealing what's on the books or proposing to and proposing uh new requirements. Um, they're essentially cost-neutral provisions. We've done extensive outreach with um all of the building owners uh that are affected by those uh proposed changes. And as I said, they're essentially cost-neutral, but they get us to a place that these systems will operate um as we need them to. Uh, next slide, please. So Mike, um, I think uh gave you a quick highlight of these implementation dates, but we have the National Electrical Code that goes into effect on October twenty-ninth by state law. Uh, we are proposing um changes to, well, I should say that the state is also mandating that the construction codes and fire codes go into effect, the two thousand eighteen versions on February first of next year. Uh, we're asking um that in addition to the electrical code, um that you implement provisions. Um, I went over three of them. Uh, the fourth one is the fire inspection fee. So we're proposing some minor changes to fire inspection fees um that get at uh issues that we highlighted when uh the fees went into effect. Um, so you recall the last time I was in front of you, uh, we had um made some changes based on our experience uh doing outreach with the customer groups. And I told you at that time that we'd probably identify some more. Uh, we've identified uh some minor changes um for three distinct building types, and the proposed changes would actually decrease the fees for those affected buildings. Uh, we're also proposing in the fee chapter that we um institute late fees for um individuals that file uh late uh for their uh confidence test um program fee. So if they're more than five days late, um, that there's a ten-dollar late fee that's associated with that. Right now, there's nothing on the books that that um has a a bookend, if you will, about expectations there, so there's a a late fee associated with that. And then there's also a um a a fee associated with insufficient funds that's contained in that. I already went over the proposed changes to the in-building radio systems, that's Section five-ten, uh elevator maintenance, and Section six-oh-nine uh revisions to the firefighter air replenishment six uh system, which is in um chat, um, Section nine-nineteen, and the National Electrical Codes. We're proposing that those go into effect on uh October twenty-ninth and the balance um on February first of next year. And I think that takes us to the the last slide, and any questions or direction that council would have for us.
Okay, thank you very much. I will call on you in this order, Councilmember Stokes, followed by Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, Councilmember Barcsdale, Lee, Zahn, Robertson, and then me. So, uh, Councilmember Stokes, can you start us off?
There we go. Um, yeah, thank you. Uh, very good. I I really appreciate uh going through this and all the upgrades and uh getting things uh lined up well, and of course, with the changes in national codes and all. And the the only real question I have or a request is that uh would like you to uh look at the the question of uh eliminating or reducing fees uh in fire inspection fees in affordable housing uh circumstances. Other cities are doing that, as I understand. I've checked on some of them, and uh, you know, it's just another way we can uh help stretch uh the resources um that we're already putting into affordable housing and and other organizations are. So if you could look at that and report back, I would appreciate it, and I think other council members would, and uh I know we have to balance these things, but you've been doing a good job of balancing it uh, you know, the last time around and changing from the prior um uh wh- where you've uh handled this, so I I think that would be a great thing for us to look at and a part of our um efforts to uh make affordable housing uh real. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, well, first of all, great presentation, and thank you, Mike, uh Greg, Trisna, and Ken. Ken, thank you so much for your service to our city. Um, I'll I'll miss you, and um certainly hope you enjoy your retirement as well. Um, so clearly, we're mandated to implement a lot of these international and state codes, so my and a lot of them, quite frankly, make a lot of sense, and we want to be up to code in every sense of the word uh to ensure safety for our residents, um, you know, be it re- residential or commercial. Um, uh, just the question regarding, two, two items. One for the, because I find it kind of fascinating, the um, kind of the fuel on demand. So if um, if if a company did want to, um, so, because I don't believe there's one offering that service in Bellevue right now, but if they were, um, what would that look like? Would they still be able to um to to get a permit or to be able to conduct business in the City of Bellevue? What would be the the steps to do that? And then my other question uh would just be around uh single-family homes um and any undue burden that they might have to um uh uh address in order to develop more single-family homes. It it sounded as if there was an an issue there with a additional electrical um uh mandate that they would have to implement there. Would there be a significant upcharge in order to um to get up to code on that? So those would be my two questions. Thank you.
I don't hear anything yet.
Ken, why don't you take, Ken, why don't you take that first question and Greg, uh, the second question?
Certainly. Um, so your question about what it would take to get a permit in Bellevue. Uh, first off, to my knowledge, um, nobody's offering that service in Bellevue. Uh, we've had some inquiries. Uh, if somebody wanted to do that uh sort of business, they'd have to apply for an operational permit. Uh, they would need to show us where uh they plan to to do this, because the fire code um regulates. For example, you can't perform this on a public street, you can't perform it on a building or under a building, so it would have to be in a a parking lot, if you will. Um, and you'd have to have a property owner willing to let them do that. Um, and we'd need to make sure that their vehicles and personnel uh met requirements of of code. So frankly, I don't see a lot of opportunity in Bellevue for that to take place, um, but who knows? We'll see what what happens um in the long run. Okay. Great, thank you. Absolutely.
Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, on your question regarding the electrical disconnect, uh, one, just to clarify, it does not apply to existing buildings. It would only be new construction. My understanding is that it's not a significant cost increase, but I can certainly get some more information on that and share with you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
You bet.
And just one quick, one more question about the food trucks. It's because they're great and I love to see them around the city and outside of businesses, et cetera. So just to clarify, so they get one permit. That permit will be valid throughout King County or maybe even throughout the state then? Or is it just for King County that as long as they have that permit, they can operate anywhere?
In Bellevue, the proposed amendment is that we would recognize any legitimate permit issued by another King County Fire Agency.
Okay.
So there's a certain amount of coordination that we need to do regionally to make sure that we're all holding the food trucks to the same standard. But we see no benefit of requiring multiple permits, provided that other agencies in the area are holding them to that same standard.
Perfect, thanks, Ken.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Barxale.
All right, thank you. And congratulations on your retirement, Ken. I'm sure you're looking forward to that time to not have to go into work. So I will say thank you for the presentation. I support the comments around looking for ways that we can reduce fees for affordable housing and also looking for way, I appreciate the comment about transferring or allowing, accepting licenses for food trucks or from other, from any fire department. It's usually an entryway for many small business owners in the restaurant industry to get started. So I appreciate that. I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, congratulations, Fire Marshal Ken Carson. We're gonna miss you. As you've been doing a wonderful job over the years. So I don't have any specific questions because it's being asked primarily by Deputy Mayor. I think the most important part is that you're making the food trucks so that they only have to have one permit rather than, you know, meeting different requirements. So I think that is a, it's a wonderful consideration. The question is, how do we coordinate with all the other cities to make sure that we all agree, you know, to the same requirements? So maybe you can say a couple of words on that. The second one is just wanted to mention about this gasoline thing. Yeah, you know, the, it seems to be a very interesting service. But again, I think there's certain, but the question was asked of you by Deputy Mayor, but you answered properly is that there are other requirements that have to meet. It's not just so simple, this go onto the somebody's, some way. And you're just saying, well, we're gonna get your car built in and start a business. So I assume, you know, there are other requirements and about licensing and whatnot. So I hope, you know, those things would be obviously considered. So the question basically is, how do you work with the other jurisdictions regarding the licensing of food trucks so that, you know, they do have only one stop service?
So we work extensively with other agencies in what we call King County Fire Zone One. So we meet on a, on a monthly basis. We also have King County Fire Marshals Association that meets on a quarterly basis. And both food trucks and mobile fueling are topics that we have talked a lot about. They're on our work plan to develop consistent application of, of those requirements.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a great retirement.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you. And I too wish you well in your retirement, Ken. Being a fire marshal is not easy. There's a lot of responsibility there. So I hope that you get some time to relax and enjoy yourself. So many things that I appreciate about this presentation. You know, the thoroughness of the work to make sure that our codes are, have conformance and consistency with the, the international and the state building codes. So thank you for that. A couple of things I want to highlight that I appreciate. The one about making sure that if there are elevators that is a single access, that we actually do make sure that folks that live there are going to be taken care of if there's going to be extended shutdown. Because I can only imagine if there's an emergency, how they would actually get that help. I see a lot of areas about fire prevention, so I appreciate that. I also saw that from the standpoint of the energy code, that there's a solar readiness in there now for buildings of a certain height. So I, I appreciate that part. I'd like to hear a bit about what energy code changes there might be related to improving the environment and having more energy efficient buildings. But maybe that's something we can take offline. The other one related to the mobile fueling, I'm concerned about spill prevention if we are looking at mobile fueling anywhere, especially when we have times when there's more fire dangers. So the idea that there is a, a combustion source that may be out in the community is a concern to me. And then lastly, I'm super excited about the fact that, that wood can be used for up to eighteen stories in high-rise buildings. Because I think that that's an opportunity for us to look at buildings in a different way and perhaps have some opportunities for some innovation. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers Zahn. Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks. I have three questions, but first I want to join my colleagues in Von Voyage and Ken. I don't know what we're gonna do. You've been the only fire marshal that I've been working with, and it's been a long time. You've definitely earned your retirement. So really appreciate all your time and energy that you've put into making Bellevue safer and better. And I enjoy your retirement because I do believe you've earned it. So for my three questions, some of the, well, the question about mobile fueling has been asked, but I wanted to make about the spill prevention. I think that's an excellent point. It's one that I'm concerned about. I understand that we wouldn't allow that to happen on public, on public property or public rights of way and that you'd have to get permission from the underlying property owner. But gas stations are one of those facilities where there is a lot of environmental spills and remediation that's needed. And we just can't spread that all around. I'm really concerned about the environmental impacts of having fuel dispensed pretty much anywhere in the city other than public property. Now, it's one thing if you have run out of gas and AAA is bringing you a gallon of gas. That is, but having a, a company come to your business and fuel up your cars or fuel up your fleet is a whole nother issue. And how do we, are we allowed to prohibit that kind of service except in an emergency, the vehicles out of gas situation?
So the answer to that question, the short answer would be yes, we, we could prohibit it. There are some agencies, Redmond is one, that will prohibit that sort of fueling in most of the cities from an environmental standpoint because they have aquifers to protect. That's really not our circumstance. The code does recognize the potential for environmental concerns. And so, for example, it gives the fire marshal the latitude to either issue a blanket permit to fuel anywhere in the city or to require site-specific permit. My intent is that they're required to get a site-specific permit, show definitively where things like storm drains are or streams or any of that sort of thing, and show how they're going to mitigate the potential that there would be, you know, any spill that, that would go into that. As I said, this is a relatively new industry. My advice would be, you know, let's put appropriate controls in place, which I think we have. We'll see how the industry behaves. And if we need to make adjustments going forward, that we make those adjustments. I think that we have the latitude, you know, if we end up like we just did a few weeks ago, or we have a high degree of concern about, you know, fire danger, that, that maybe we suspend the permits for that time period. So I think we have latitude to deal with it. But I think that we let the industry see how, how they behave. And again, I don't think you're going to see a high incidence of that use in Bellevue just because the real estate doesn't lend itself to that. We don't have seas of parking lots, you know. And again, you can't fuel on public rights of way and you can't fuel on a building or under a building. So if you just think about Bellevue, that limits, you know, where it can be done significantly.
And structured parking is considered a building.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I understand that we have some things in place. I would probably be more inclined to want to just let the industry develop elsewhere and then check in and see how they're doing before we start allowing it here. Because we do need to keep our stormwater, our stormwater clean. You know, when we get runoff, it, you know, those things can perk into the ground and contaminate, but they can also contaminate our streams and lakes and damage our fish and other wildlife. So that's my two cents on that. So the second question, and I heard this briefly in the PowerPoint. I, I know that this is a very, most of this is very routine. We're just doing the updates as required by law. So I'm very comfortable with that. And I understand that we can't, we have to update what the State Building Code Council has adopted from the, from the I codes. And, but we can make them more narrow. We can't make them more loose. I thought I heard in the presentation that there was one or two things that we are proposing a local modification. Could you please spell those out?
Certainly. Well, there's a number of modifications. We've highlighted for council what we would consider significant. But the three significant ones that I highlighted in one of the last slides were the in-building radio systems. So these allow police and firefighters to communicate in the building. So I chaired a task force over eighteen months and we identified a series of amendments that are intended to be adopted countywide, not just in Bellevue, but countywide. It's a regional radio system. So that's, that's one area. The elevator maintenance provisions are another area. And then the third area was the firefighter air replenishment systems.
And so we're requiring those, those are already required for new buildings, but we're requiring them for what, major upgrades of buildings?
No. So they, they were required effective in two thousand eighteen when council passed the ordinance for all new high-rise buildings. That hasn't changed. The concept hasn't changed. We're just dialing it in so that they, they work more aligned with our operational needs than what we had brought to council before.
Okay, got it, got it. And the last question might be more for Trisna, and that is, I understand that we are bringing in the Uniform Code for Abatement of Dangerous Buildings, which, yeah, it hasn't been updated in thirteen years. Why has Bellevue instead not just adopted the International Property Maintenance Code? That's a code that is much more routinely updated. And yeah, I know there's some difference between that and the abatement of dangerous buildings, but the International Property Maintenance Code will do just about everything the Uniform Code for Abatement of Dangerous Buildings will do, and it does a whole lot more. So have we considered that? If not, why not, you know, why not do that instead?
This actually may be something that Greg could answer better than I can. But Greg, I think we have looked at adopting the National Maintenance Code.
Yes, we have Councilmember Robertson. And with the next code adoption, which will actually be in about two and a half years because the implementation in this cycle was delayed due to COVID nineteen. But we can take another look at that. There are pros and cons going either way. Yet most local cities that have adopted the International Property Maintenance Code have heavily amended it to take out a number of things, requirements to cut your grass and things like that, that we may not want to include in our code adoption. So if there are certain provisions of the International Property Maintenance Code that we don't have, we certainly could take a look at either incorporating them directly into this new Bellevue City Code, Chapter twenty-three-twenty, or we could just switch to the International Property Maintenance Code.
Okay, that would, that would be helpful. I think that it might be worth looking at because they do have some really, it's more up to date than the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings Code. It has a lot of the same structural stability, things, et cetera. And it just, it's, I have found it to be very useful in helping maintain standards, you know, not the cutting of the grass. I'm talking about real things that matter. And I have found that it's a lot more usable and more current than abatement of dangerous buildings. So I just was wondering why we didn't do it. And I think that we should think about it. So.
We'll take another look.
But otherwise, I'm very happy with moving forward on all of these. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So I had three things. First of all, with the elevator maintenance, I experienced that firsthand at Silver Glen. And I think that they really need to have a commitment from their elevator maintenance contractor that there's a twenty-four hour response to any problems that happen because they had an incident on Friday and the maintenance people wouldn't go, come until Monday. And that's just not, you know, going to fly with older adults. So, and it doesn't fly with a lot of places and especially anybody with a disability. So if there's a way to, to make it so they have to have that clause in their contract, I think that would be helpful. And then number two, the ten dollar late fee, that doesn't seem like much of a disincentive. You might want to add a zero or something to that one. And then number three, Councilmember Stokes brought up waiving inspection fees for affordable housing. I don't know how you can look into that and bring this back for approval at the next meeting. Do you, do we need to have another meeting? Or how are we going to? And also, Councilmember Robertson's concerns. And any, but anything else that people wanted to have a question answered on before approval? Is, how are we going to handle those?
So my suggestion on that would be, I, I think the question about the fee amendment, we'll have to take a little harder look at that because that has other ramifications regarding the cost recovery for the program, et cetera. But, and how we would offset that. But we certainly, through Ken and Steph and Fire Department, we can look into that. I think the other questions that have been raised were mostly kind of technical information questions, and we can certainly bring that back when we bring, bring the ordinance back for adoption and, and answer those questions. Or we could certainly provide some information in advance of, of that meeting to, to see if we can adequately respond to these questions. I, I think they're all relatively straightforward, just providing some additional technical information. And then a strategy about the next update, the, the last one that, that Councilmember Robertson raised about the International Property Maintenance Code. That's a fairly significant piece of work. We obviously couldn't get done between now and the next time we meet on this topic. But in the next code adoption cycle, certainly we could look at that as, as another alternative to property maintenance or the Housing Code and the Abatement Code requirements would be my suggestion. So that would be, I think we can probably provide pretty firm answers on the technical questions that have been raised. But the, the fee question might be a little bit more complicated, but I'll have to let Ken respond to the, what it would take to, to actually explore that.
But one, one strategy to, to deal with that would be to tie it into the budget conversations that council's going to be having. So we could bring back as part of the, the budget update, you know, different options that you might look at. You know, as I think about affordable housing or low-income housing, you know, not everything's created the same. You know, the current ordinance provides an exemption for any building that's, that's a five oh one C three building. But when I think about, you know, low-income housing, there are some low-income housing that's operated by for-profit organizations, not, not five oh one C three. So I, I might need some assistance from council, understanding what the target is exactly. But we can certainly bring back some options for you to look at.
I'm thinking you should tie it more to our affordable housing strategy where we talk about, you know, getting rid of some of the fees in order to make the housing more affordable. So maybe that's a way to look at it as well.
Okay.
So when do, when will this be coming back to us?
I'm not sure. We haven't locked in on a, on a, on a date yet. It would probably be within the next several weeks, though.
Okay, so maybe, Mr. Miyake, we can make sure that we can have a staff briefings before that meeting if, if we want to pursue some of the questions we had tonight.
Yes, Mayor. We got it.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much and congratulations. It's Fire Marshal Carlson, soon to be ex-Fire Marshal Carlson or former fire, fire marshal. But thank you for your incredible service to the community and to the city particularly. Let's all give him a, a goodbye.
Thank you so much.
Take care. All right, thank you. So next up, we have our Bellevue Economic Development Plan. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce that?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, just by, by way of background, in July of two thousand nineteen, the economic development plan update process began with the approval of eight council objectives for the plan. Tonight is the eighth discussion with council regarding the plan update. Tonight's presentation will include a recap of the plan update process as well as an overview of the contents within the draft plan itself. Tonight's presentation will include a recap of the plan update process as well as an overview of the contents within the draft plan itself. Also, on July sixth of this year, that was the last time we were in front of you. Staff and the consultant presented strategies and priority tactics that were focused on economic recovery from the COVID pandemic. With council feedback at that meeting on the strategies and tactics, we are, they, they appear to be on target. Council directed staff to move forward with the development of the full draft plan, which now is in front of you tonight. So tonight, we, staff is requesting direction to return with a final version and a resolution to adopt, formally adopt the Economic Development Plan. That's in front of you this evening. Joining us this evening is Matt Cummins, Director, and Jessica Nado, Chief Economic Development Officer, Philly Marsh, Economic Development Manager, all from the Community Development Department. Also joining the team tonight is Tony Delisi, who is our consultant from Princeton Young. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Mac.
Thank you, City Manager Miyake, Mayor and members of the council. It's good to be back with you this evening. We're excited to be back here for the eighth study session. Tonight, you have in front of you the Economic Development Strategic Plan in its totality and draft form for your consideration. And we're gonna spend some time tonight walking through the document and talking about the structure of the document and what it's intended to do. I thought I might just start in the presentation with what we started some time ago. It's been a little over a year. We've been a little delayed as a result of COVID and, and our inability to have public meetings. But at that time, when the council set out its objectives for this effort, we started a staff with a, a question around the future of economic development. And that question went something like this. In the future, is capital gonna follow labor? Or is labor gonna follow capital? And said another way, are companies going to need to go to where their workers want to be? Or the worker is simply gonna go to where jobs are going to be? And as we have studied economic development and worked with our stakeholders and thought about that philosophical question, we believe very strongly that the future of economic development is about creating great places and about thinking about physical place making and the role of what the city can do to help attract companies to want to be in your city as a result of all those different efforts. So the council adopted those objectives and we'll walk you back through those and how they show up in the plan to think about the role of some economic areas that were not in the first city economic development plan. Noticeably around the role of retail and tourism and visitor convention bureau, thinking about transportation systems and housing choice. And then the role of primary employment, which was the focus of, of the first plan and what the next generation of primary employment will look like for the city. We think the plan that you're gonna take a look at this evening is a balanced approach. We've done a substantial amount of public outreach with our business community and our various stakeholders and the regional organizations, and they provided feedback to you all along the way about the various strategies and tactics that you see in the draft plan. And so we're excited that tonight we'll have a chance to show the plan to the public in its, in its full, take feedback from the council, and then hopefully have a direction from the council to have the plan adopted. So Philly, can you go to the next slide? The direction we're asking for from the council this evening is to give a head nod that this plan represents in its final form what you're all looking for and that the language works and direction that we can place it on a future agenda with a resolution to have the, the plan adopted. The council, in, over the weekend and a little bit last week, sent some comments to the staff with some potential wordsmith or modifications, mostly around clarity and maybe some emphasis in a few areas. We provided that to the council in a desk packet format here. Our suggestion for you all is if those language additions work for you all, you can simply give us direction that that works and, and we will simply add those, those comments into the draft plan and then bring it back in totality for adoption. Mostly those relate to things, I'll just throw out an example you can read through in your desk packet. There were some comments from multiple council members around using words like multimodal transportation systems and some of the words that our, our transportation staff and Transportation Commissioner are starting to use as the future, not simply say transportation. Or when we talk about the future of retail or place making, that we want to make sure we focus not just, say, on traditional retailing or the downtown, but in all of the neighborhoods. And those types of services should be throughout the city and the different neighborhoods. So when we get to the end of the presentation, we'll talk a little bit more about that, but I just want to make sure that's out there as you think about your comments tonight. If you're in a place to give us direction to adopt the plan, that's what we're proposing. Philly, give me the next slide. So the agenda tonight, we'll talk about where we've come from and where we are. We'll talk about the different outcomes that the council has said that you're looking for. Walk through the strategic themes. This is the area that we've been talking with our stakeholders about and what we're seeing in the future of economic development and the different foundations that are being built. And then the plan itself, we'll walk through the structure and give you some examples. We've identified foundational strategies and carryovers from the previous Economic Development Plan. And then we've talked about direct strategies and coming out of COVID and what those types of growth strategies should look like so that we can really be nimble as a community in the implementation of our economic development program. And then lastly, we'll talk about the five-year implementation plan. This plan is meant to be five years with an individual annual action plan to focus on the various areas that are of most concern or most need going into the future year. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Philly, who's been a project manager on this and really carried this forward with the labor of love to walk through a number of those things. And then she and I, and Tony Delisi from Ernst &amp; Young, will handle different parts of the presentation.
Thank you, Mac. We began this process back in two thousand nineteen with council-approved objectives for the plan. After those objectives were approved by council, we conducted a nationwide search to, to find a consultant and we selected Avalanche Consulting based on their expertise in the defined areas of the plan. As we noted previously, Avalanche was acquired by EY back in March, March. And that wealth of resources of that global firm really heightened our confidence that we were headed in the right direction with this plan update, even as we were amidst an unprecedented global pandemic. The development of this plan included reviewing previous studies, plans and documents to make sure that we were reflective of past efforts. We analyzed Bellevue's economic position against peer cities, conducted extensive stakeholder outreach with multiple touchpoints. And then we did reevaluate and refine in the wake of COVID to ensure that this plan is reflective of the current economic situation and has the ability for us to remain nimble throughout implementation. That reevaluation also led to continued conversations with our partner organizations, both ones that we have established relationships with, as well as reaching out to new organizations to start the foundation of a partnership moving forward. Again, throughout this process, we have routinely presented the direction and development of the plan to council. And we want to take a moment to truly thank council for the valuable input that each of you have provided along the way. That input has been incorporated and really helped make this a plan that we're proud to present to you in final draft form. Again, we were last in front of council in early July to present the detailed strategies and tactics within the plan. We were pleased to hear that we were on target and received positive feedback and direction to proceed with the development of this draft plan. Really quickly, as a refresher, these are the objectives that were approved by council that really laid the, the groundwork for the chapters that you see within the plan. Capacity building, small business, workforce, retail, creative economy and tourism. And then, of course, the plan is chapter-based, so it will be easier to update in future iterations. I want to take, take this moment to thank our consultant, Tony Delisi, who has been working with us for over a year, making multiple trips to Bellevue, and has just been an absolute pleasure to work with through this update process. I'm going to now turn it over to him to speak on the desired outcomes as well as the strategic themes that you see within the plan.
Thank you, Philly, and hello, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. I'd like to also just say hello again from Austin, Texas here. I've got my background as well. And I would also just say it's been a pleasure working with the city. We appreciate this opportunity. But not just to work with the city of Bellevue where there's so much exciting work happening in terms of economic growth, culture and the quality of the community, but also with city staff through this process. It's really been a tremendous pleasure. And just to, to reiterate, along with those objectives that were identified, I, I, I like to have Mac said in opening, the thinking about communities as great places. And we really have seen that trend of businesses following people across the country in recent years. And not just do the businesses follow the people, but I firmly believe that economic development is really rooted in the people of the community. The, the goal of all this activity is to serve quality places. And this plan is truly designed to sustain enhanced Bellevue's exemplary quality of life and is a great place to live and be. Within that, there are five areas of desired outcomes that we identified and discussed. One, really having a resilient local economy. In times like this, we really see the benefit of that. Having a strong regional economy, it's, it's difficult to separate Bellevue from the greater Puget Sound region. And knowing the role that the city plays and, and being proactive and in sustaining, enhancing that role. Also thinking about the employment opportunities we can create and paths of prosperity for a wide range of residents. Making sure that equity is top of mind and that the economy is working for everybody that lives within the city and creating those connections and those opportunities for all of the residents. Along with that, a, a key outcome is making supportive and attractive place for businesses to operate so that they can sustain that environment. And ultimately, all around, making this a sustainable city environmentally in terms of the equity for the community and the long-term viability of the local economy. Philly, good. Next slide, please. With, along with those outcomes, through our planning process, as Philly and Mac mentioned, myself and my partners and consulting team, we had a lot of conversations with residents and businesses in Bellevue's, reviewing so much stakeholder engagements, surveys and the voices of people in the community along with leadership here. And through those conversations, we really saw some key themes emerge. These come from those desires, the data, really where the community is today and where the community wants to be. One of those is around connection, finding ways to connect people in the community to each other. It's, it's so much more important during COVID when we think about how distant we are, but this drives business, it drives the arts, it drives that quality of life. And it's also about connecting people to the businesses and vice versa. We know that people are one of Bellevue's greatest assets, incredibly well-educated community, wanting to connect them to businesses, connect them to opportunities. It also drives partnerships, which gets to collaboration. I loved hearing the young speaker during the oral communications at the beginning. He said collaboration will always be more successful. And that's so true with economic development. Successful economic development takes more than just the city. And by proactively engaging with partners, helping build their capacity, we can achieve so much more. And that involves communication. Achieving this success depends on keeping everybody in touch, working together where they can all be most successful, clearly showing those channels to connect. And that's also a process of telling a bold, clear story of Bellevue. The businesses, the talent, the opportunity that's in the community so that others can discover why Bellevue really is a premier place to work, live and visit, which are all key objectives of this plan. Connecting all of that together, our thinking both about regionalism and internationalism. Bellevue is an incredibly diverse international city, but it's also part of a region that is growing and diverse as well. And getting that story out and being a successful economy will require working in alignment and collaborating with those regional partners like the Greater, Greater Seattle Partnership and positioning Bellevue within the region to strengthen it and continue to welcome businesses and people from around the world. And those are truly tremendous themes that you don't see in very many communities around the country or the globe. And with that, I will pass it to Mac.
Thanks, Tony. So moving into the next part of the presentation, we're gonna talk a little bit about the plan and how it's structured and why it's structured that way. And I mentioned earlier that we would touch on our foundational strategies and our direct strategies, which get into growth and coming out of COVID. The foundational strategies are the portion of the document that really are the longstanding, ongoing economic development efforts. And they're meant to support a high quality of life for, for both the residents and the businesses. A number of these concepts and the tactics and the metrics are based coming out of our last Economic Development Plan and carry forward, though not all. Effectively, what they're intended to do is provide a business climate and related infrastructure that, that helps facilitate and helps encourage business investment in the community. And they're based on the idea that we want to continue to cultivate and attract businesses throughout the city, not just in certain portions. And that's why there are a number of, of tactics specifically relating to looking at different portions of the city and looking citywide. A major component of economic development is in creating and retaining world-class talent. And the relationship between the pipeline of educational systems and workforce training and all the different types of programs that go into creating that talent pipeline is a pretty important concept. It's foundational to our approach. Additionally, thinking about the regionalism that Tony was just talking about, we don't compete just within the Puget Sound region. We actually compete nationally and internationally for companies to come and locate. And once companies are interested in the Puget Sound region, obviously there are strategies that are designed to help them see Bellevue as the most attractive place to land. So the foundational strategies are all outlined in the document. These are all things that you saw in previous study sessions. If there are specific questions about any of those, be happy to answer those when we get to Q and A. But the foundational strategies are, are really the, the pillar and the, and as it says, the foundation of the direct strategies that, that come with this new document, looking at some, some subject areas that we did not in the last Economic Development Strategic Plan. So I'm gonna hand it off to Philly to talk about those direct strategies and the growth strategies coming out of COVID.
So there is, I'm just really excited to, to get going on the implementation of these strategies and tactics. We covered the strategies and tactics in depth back in July, and we were again pleased with the feedback from council that we were on target. These plans, focus areas or chapters within the plan are a dropdown of those council objectives laid out at the beginning of this plan update. They include capacity building and partnership. And the strategies in this chapter focus on convening and working in partnership with organizations as well as employers to achieve our vision, as well as increase business engagement, as well as with major employers in the community. Small Business and Entrepreneurship Chapter really focuses on ensuring all of our business and entrepreneurs, especially those of diverse backgrounds, have the access and the resources they need to start a business as well as grow and thrive in Bellevue. The Workforce Chapter includes connecting and expanding access to education, training and job opportunities. So Bellevue residents have the opportunity for career growth right here within Bellevue. The Retail Chapter includes the important work of retaining and recruiting diverse and healthy mix of retail based on local need. We want to make sure that the goods and services that residents need are close by so they don't have to drive outside of the city to purchase those. The Creative Economy Chapter includes using our leading position in the digital creative sectors to support the traditional creative businesses and organizations, as well as positioning Bell Red Arts District as a major destination. And then lastly, the Tourism Chapter focuses on working with Visit Bellevue, our destination marketing organization, to foster more tourism activities such as events, nightlife and various product offerings. In terms of implementation, as Mac mentioned, this is intended to be a five-year plan. We are, we did stop, reevaluate and refine based on what we know now on, about COVID. And we denoted the short-term recovery strategies, which is what we'd like to focus our implementation on first because we know that if there's an immediate need and those strategies will have the greatest return of investment. And then we're gonna work closely with our regional and local partners to align efforts of interpreting recovery and when it's time to, to start layering in those growth strategies that are outlined within the plan. Now, in terms of implementation, there will also be an annual action plan that will be presented to council yearly, and that's where And that's where we'll have the specific strategies and actions that we'll be focusing on over the next year with appropriate performance metrics with each one of those. We are doing this because we know a lot can happen over five years, especially as we're in the middle of a pandemic. So we want to be able to stay nimble and ensure effective investment of our efforts. This will also allow us to incorporate the latest situational analysis and data into that annual action plan. And then we will continue to provide the quarterly reports to council where we will come and report on the progress of achieving those tactics and goals for that current year. And with that, I will turn it back over to Mac.
Thanks, Philly. We're going to wrap up here. And as we're finishing up the staff presentation, I just want to take a minute to to thank our staff in economic development that have been working tirelessly on this. Jesse Canado, our Assistant Director oversees all the economic development programs, couldn't be with us tonight. But I want to just put a word in for all the work he's put in and all the meetings he's had, working with all our business stakeholders to solicit their feedback and incorporate that into the document. And thank you to Philly for overseeing the whole program. And Tony, thanks for your help. So Mayor, the request tonight is to receive direction from the council that the plan in its draft form here is ready for adoption and to give us direction to bring it back at a future meeting with a resolution for that adoption. As I mentioned earlier, we created a desk packet based on individual council members' feedback. We think that we've addressed individual thoughts as they were submitted to us. So those could be incorporated too, if it's the council's wish. And at that point, we're here to answer any questions you all may have and help with the dialogue.
Okay. Thank you very much. Great presentation. So that desk packet that you're referring to was not sent out until just before the meeting. I'm not sure how many council members actually had a chance to look at that. But many of us emailed language revisions that we wanted to see. And so that desk packet includes every single comment the council members submitted and then how it either is already reflected in the language or how they can reflect it in the new language. So it's important that each council member look through that and kind of give it a thumbs up or ask for a modification if it doesn't represent the comments that they wanted included. And I don't expect you to be able to do that during the meeting tonight. But maybe this week, you could get your feedback back to staff so that they can incorporate that into the final version. So we'll go ahead with comments and questions, starting with Councilmember Lee, then Councilmembers On, Robertson, Barksdale, Deputy Mayor, Stokes, and then me. So Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Brother Mayor. Great presentation. I mean, the framework was absolutely right on spot. You know, I was briefed about it and I, you know, responded to that. One of the things that is specific that impressed me is that our response to the COVID-19 pandemic. You guys have done a yeoman's job in responding to the impact, you know, our businesses have been feeling. And I think also you were able to, in addition to, you know, doing things, responding, you were able to develop this vision, strategy. I think maybe, you know, you framed it, I think, Mac, the fundamental, foundational strategy. I think that's very well put. I don't really, you know, catch specifically, well, find any fault with the strategy itself, you know, foundational. Because these are all great things that you're talking about. In particular, you know, the one that showed the best is in the the direct strategy. I'm trying to see, yeah, direct strategy focus areas. And the first question I think Matt, you mentioned is, which drives what? Money follow people or people follow money? And I couldn't agree more wholeheartedly that people is our number one, our talent. If we have talent, anything will follow, including money. So I agree with that. And then, you know, by looking at the focus areas, absolutely, you know, things that to do with people, building capacity, that's people. Talking about partnership, that's people. And you're talking about our regional location, our international, our diversity. We have global talent here. We are a city that, because of the environment, because of the quality of life, because all the things that we've heard in the public telling us during the budget discussion, we have people. And I think that's all great. And also, you mentioned small business entrepreneurship. That's again, people. People can make this happen. If without people, you know, there's no small business, no entrepreneurship. That talks about diversity because small businesses represent diversity. It's not one giant, one company. Used to be, I remember in the old days, when I first came to Bellevue, 50 years ago, it's Boeing Company. We call them Mother Boeing. So when the economy struck, you know, we are in bad shape. But fortunately, you know, the people remain in Bellevue because they want to stay here. They want to raise a family here. So the people bought small businesses. They became innovative, creative. They started small businesses. As a result, we have biotechnology. We've got a whole bunch of small companies. As a result, little companies became big ones, Microsoft, other technology. So I think that is, again, people, talent. So I think that goes into workforce, right? Same thing. Now, we have technology, we develop people, we develop ability to create, innovate. And we have technology coding schools, we teach them, we train them. You know, we have Bellevue College and we work with industries. The industries help them to beef up their education force. And so, again, retail was one of the small businesses components. And then we talk about creative economy. I would like to include, emphasize one word, is culture is important. Because culture relates to people. People from all over the world, they bring their own different cultures to this country. And again, this country, our strength is in our diversity, is in our immigrants. They bring people from all over the world, talents from all over the world.
Councilmember Lee, I'm going to let you finish up that thought.
Okay. The only, so I just want to leave one note, which is the thought, I think that we need to have more focus. I already said, devil is in the detail. So I would like to see more, how can we turn all these wonderful foundational strategies into action? Okay, I would like to stop at that and let's go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers On.
Yes, I want to thank Mac, Jesse and Philly. I can tell this is plan is a labor of love of Bellevue. So thank you so much for really listening to us and incorporating our feedback and our comments into this plan. I think each of us can see our comments reflected in either the foundational long-term strategies or in the direct short-term focus. So I really appreciate that. You know, last week I listened in on the Puget Sound Economic Summit where they were talking about, you know, our region and coming out of COVID and the recovery. And I think that with the strategies we have, we are so well poised to do that. So I'm very thankful for that. I appreciate that I can see my comments reflected in there. A couple of comments I did have in addition. And that is that on the key themes, I like the key themes that are listed. But I agree with Councilmember Lee that I think that multiculturalism is, I'd like to see that word actually reflected in there because I don't think it's the same as internationalism or regionalism. And then I realized that innovation is one that I think part of economic development, how we look at innovative economies, innovative ideas. Last week, we talked about the ESI, the Environmental Stewardship Initiative. I think there's potentially a lot of businesses and economy there related to as we work on our environment and climate. And especially when I think about a lot of the people that are working in Bellevue, I think that the median age of the workers perhaps are getting younger. And they very much, like a lot of the students have come to talk to us, care about the environment. So I think that might be another area that we can look at. I appreciate thinking about investing throughout the city and not just within a couple of discrete areas. So I like that. So as I think about the focus on the short term, really, who are those partners? Because I think coming out of COVID, we're having some, we're going to be talking about our budget and some of the budget challenges. So can we identify in a short term, who else are willing to engage with us in partnerships so that all of us are carrying a bit of this water of the vibrancy of Bellevue? And then lastly, I am curious about how comparable cities that we were developing this plan using, how they're doing as they recover from COVID? And are there some lessons we can draw? Because I also agree with Councilmember Lee. A plan is one thing, but actually being able to take action that's meaningful is the most important part. So that is my one question is comparable cities and how are they doing? Are we doing better ideas? Thank you.
Did you have a response to that, Mac, or should we move on?
I think I might ask Philly and Tony, of the comparable cities, we may not have enough data at this point. And we certainly know what some of the different action plans are. But we might be able to just fold that into the next quarterly update too, as we start to see more data coming through the COVID time period.
That would be, that would be informative. Thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks. Um, I'm really excited about this new plan. And I really appreciate the work that staff and our consultant have done to put it together. It's very readable. It's got a nice look and feel. You can find things in it. And I think it captures very well a lot of where we want to go as a city. And I also wanted to say, I really appreciate the desk packet with the information. The first two comments regarding the importance of childcare and the second one, which was the importance of, oh, of the local businesses. I absolutely support having those in there. I really support all of the things in the desk packet. I think they're all really excellent. One of the things I'd like to think about as we move forward with economic development, particularly with regard to the local amenities, is the idea of being a 15-minute city. Every person in Bellevue, I hope, will be able to get their basic needs met within 15 minutes of where they live, whether it's groceries, takeout or a meal out, seeing a doctor, going to the drugstore, you know, et cetera. The, you know, accessing, of course, parks and trail and transit. All of that, I think, should be within 15 minutes of people's homes. So that's one of the reasons I pushed or I encouraged and asked for more specific language with regard to businesses that serve the local communities where they're around. We don't want any islands in Bellevue where people can't get groceries or when they don't have access to those facilities because of robust redevelopment is so much that all that's there now is office spaces, et cetera. So we want those local amenities to be available for people. I'm also going to speak a little bit about the childcare on how important that is. We're seeing right now with the COVID, it's really emphasized the importance of childcare and public schools because people are not able to work if their kids don't have a safe, healthy place to be. So many people can work at home, but if they have to then help their seven-year-old with school when they're supposed to be working, it makes it very difficult. So it's, we've always had a childcare issue. It's for a lot of people as much as a mortgage. But this has really emphasized it. And I really appreciate the language that is proposed in the desk packet. I would hope that my council colleagues will support number one and number two. Finally, I was glancing through the desk packet and glancing again through the economic development plan. And I didn't see in there, and there's a few places where it's implied. But one of the things that's so important for our new, our new economy is the connectivity with regard to internet, 5G, et cetera, especially with the work from home and for the kids, school from home. We are really loading a lot of use onto those systems. And I don't know that our systems in Bellevue are as robust as we need them to be today. But they certainly are not as robust as we need them to be in the future. As all, we have all this creative economy and digital economy growth. So I, it's kind of implied in the creative economy, in the small business and in the capacity building. But I would love to see somewhere, and I'm Mac or Tony, I'd take your input, where we could put in there the importance of making sure that, whether it's public-private partnership or a private industry, that we encourage the capacity for the tech economy that we know is here and growing. So that's a question.
I would just say, I think you're totally right. That supports so many things from the tech economy to the equity concerns. We're seeing this across the country, you know, children that don't have access both to high-speed internet, but the devices to use them are just being further pushed behind during this crisis and other things. So I think it could be woven into a lot of different areas very, very easily in this plan.
Great. So, oh my gosh, everyone just disappeared for a second. The, what is the process, and I don't know if this is a question for the mayor or for Mac, to, I mean, I'm happy, I don't know that we're taking motions tonight. I would really like to see the childcare and the, you know, the 15-minute city idea, which were captured as number one and two in the desk packet, as well as this, the tech infrastructure for connectivity for the people woven into the final plan. So how do we make that happen and still keep this on schedule?
I'm hoping that we can do kind of similar to the other topic with having some briefings before the meeting where we're supposed to approve this and see the draft that's going to be proposed at the meeting and make sure it's in alignment with what everybody's hoping to see. Does that sound reasonable, Mac?
Sure. I think what we'll do, so we have the, what we've heard up till tonight, which is in your desk packet tonight. And I think if I understood you, Mayor, you'd like everyone to take a look at that, see if that represented a solution for the comment individuals may have made. When we get ready with the resolution and the final plan, we'll of course have a final plan for your adoption. And we'll be happy to have briefings, if that's the will of the council, to answer any last questions to hopefully facilitate that adoption at the time.
I think just to give the council an opportunity to see the final or draft final well in advance so that they can weigh in and make sure that, you know, and then we can, we can discuss it in its final form at the next meeting.
Great. So what I would suggest on that is, to the extent that you're going to put draft language in, for example, from the desk packet on this internet connectivity issue, that the agenda packet for when we're ready to adopt this calls out all the changes from the version that was in tonight's packet to the version that's in that packet. And then council members can, you know, ask questions and propose changes if we want them. But otherwise, I think that would allow better transparency and tracking on all our parts. So, thanks.
I anticipate that's exactly what would happen. Okay, thank you. So next up, Councilmember Barksdale.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. And thanks so much to Philly, Mac and Jesse. As has already been said, I can definitely see the comments reflected and especially nightlife. So I appreciate that being, coming out. Kind of to that point, you know, I think the connection piece is really important. I think I've shared with you all like the role that connection has played in terms of like the way that people can connect around our community and factor that into economic development will play into how connected our community is and that sense of belonging in our community. And so I'm glad to see it as a strategic theme and is threaded throughout the rest of the plan. Also really excited about the small businesses, especially mom-and-pop shops and independent retail that play such a critical role in our community. And then I know we talked about it and I feel like it's reflected here. But as we continue to engage with other, with our partners and creating marketing collateral, just really making sure that not just the diversity that we have, but the diversity we want to see in our community is reflected. But the diversity we want to see in our community is reflected in that collateral so that people, you know, feel welcome just looking at our materials and want to visit. Um, and I appreciate that the plan is adaptive. I will ask. And I asked you this before, so I'm. I kind of have an idea of where you, where you're going with it. Um, monitoring uh, and allowing for like, how do we, how do we expect to? Make this plan transparent, like the progress and performance of this plan more transparent? And then how do we plan to continue ongoing engagement with the community as part of updating? You know? That annual plan.
Sure. Um, well, the the annual work plan, the annual action plan is really going to be where we're able to. Put in everything we've learned um, from the past year, look at our current environment. Um, and then use the strategies to understand what's going to be the best investment for effort moving forward. Um, and with that, once we know what those efforts are, what those actions are, we'll develop uh, the performance metrics. So we're able to track throughout the year what our goal was for that particular action. Um, and then the metrics and how we're um, measuring and tracking towards that uh, throughout those quarterly reports to council.
Okay. And then in terms of ongoing community engagement. How, what does, what would that look like? And how will that inform the annual planning?
Right. Well, that's, I mean, the the capacity building partnership, you know, is a, is a big focus and one of the first um. Uh, chapters that we hope to start um, implementing because those partnerships are so important. Um, so with that, in building uh, the relationship and the capacity, we hope to instill measures and um. Processes to that not only have that relationship built, but then we have good feedback loops. Um, throughout our interpretation, our implementation of the the actions.
Awesome. Thank you. So last comment, um, I I appreciate the quarterly reports. I would also love. Uh, just an ongoing way of being able to look and explore data. Based on progress.
Great. Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, again, I'll follow my colleagues here and Mac, Jesse, wherever you might be in Philly. Uh, great job on this presentation. And Tony, thank you so much for. Um, your input, input into this as well and facilitating this uh, great study and five year plan. Well, again, love, um, as my colleagues have shared the desk packet there. I think the team has done a great job in terms of uh, implementing a lot of the feedback received already. And I really appreciate the the COVID update to every section as well. Uh, that that was really important to call that out and um, I I think that'll be helpful going forward as well. But you know, the fact of the matter is we do need kind of a short term and a long term plan because COVID has certainly. You know, some industries more than others, but certainly when you look at retail, when you look at tourism, et cetera, those industries certainly have been. Uh, impacted greatly. Um, I've already shared with you my um, my interest in in the performance metrics and I appreciate man, appreciate uh. Uh, customer Barksdale bringing that up too. Um, and we don't have to go into that tonight, but uh, Philly, it'd be really important for me going forward on that quarterly basis. That we really hone in on what those performance metrics is. It sounds like you're still working on that a little bit. And also that we carry over those metrics that we used to track. And a lot of those metrics, I think, will still be valuable moving forward. Um, for retention purposes, for example, um, the number of companies that you meet, um, what their issues. Um, they're currently facing what the city can do to help address those issues. I think those are really important. So we look forward to seeing that. Really like the focus on on entrepreneurs, uh, small businesses, the neighborhood businesses. Um, you know, because we are more than just Amazon. We're more than just Facebook. Uh, we're more than just T-Mobile. So um, you know, we're, we're a city that should celebrate small businesses as much as we celebrate uh, A- Amazon and. And you know, those small businesses certainly impact the quality of life for all the neighborhoods uh, around the city. I want to get to partnerships as for a second here because uh, in the um, the the final draft. You had mentioned in the, in the partnership section, I believe it's page eighteen that said. Bellevue Chamber, the BDA did not list Innovation Triangle, did not list GSP. I'm assuming those are still part of the plan. Is that correct for both of those?
Correct. Yes, we're still um, a part of the Innovation Triangle with our neighboring cities of Kirkland and Redmond. And we work uh, close with them um, on marketing um, our collective East Side region. Um, two businesses and that is nested under the Greater Seattle Partnerships.
Okay.
In marketing the larger region. Um, so yes, that it will be, the business attraction um, will be a continuation. Um, of this piece and there will be perform goals and metrics that.
Okay, okay. Great. And I, and I just have to ask because in just doing a little due diligence on the Greater Seattle Partners website this afternoon, so. I see under their investors, you know, they have the city of Bellevue, Everett, Issaquah, Kent, Maple Valley. I didn't see the city of Seattle. Is the city of Seattle not investor in the GSP? Do you know by by chance?
I'll have to get back to you on the details of that.
Okay, okay. Ju- ju- just curious, because uh, certainly the name Seattle is is in the name of the organization. That just kind of surprised me. So I'd love to know if you get a chance. And that's not to say we don't, we're still not part of that group and there's not benefit to us still, but uh, that'd be great. I'd like to know the answer to that. Um, and the last piece, just because I love the piece and Tony's um, comment about collaboration and and connection to the region and that's so important. Um, on the, on the tourism piece, um, certainly there's a lot of intersection there with with Visit Bellevue and the importance of working with them. But has there been um, any kind of look at trying to connect with the other cities in East King County to? Kind of create like an innovation triangle, if you will, but for tourism. Um, you know, is that a kind of partnership that we can uh, look at as well or? And it might not be needed in here in terms of the language into this um, into this document, but just something I wanted to raise as I was thinking about the Innovation Triangle. So I don't know if you can speak to that at all.
Uh, yeah, I actually can speak to that from kind of past efforts of a previous life is yes, the city of uh, Bellevue along with Kirkland. Redmond and Woodinville have worked together um, with a, with a loose organization um, informal to um. Uh, to uh, define and promote to brand the East Side um, as a destination. Um, to spend a multiple day leisure trip um, on the east side of of Seattle. Um, so there have been efforts and there are continued efforts there. There's a lot of opportunities. Um, you know, with the East Trail coming up.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Um, so the, those conversations I know are are continuing. Um, and I think some of the partnership work we've done in our um, COVID response. Um, um, helps foster those partnerships and.
Great.
Moving forward.
Okay, well, I would encourage you to can keep those conversations going there, but happy to support this and move this forward. And again, uh, great work. I really love this plan and thank you for all your efforts, the entire team.
Okay, Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you very much. And again, uh, kudos, uh, Mac and Philly and Jesse and Tony. Uh, great work, great collaboration um, among yourselves and others and and with the the other staff and the council. It's always interesting to be towards the end of the these conversations because lots of stuff's been covered and I, a lot of great comments. Um, I think they were helpful on this. Um. I think uh, we could, we could all talk about this for a long time and and go into it. But I think it's uh, I really like it. I mean, even if we didn't change anything right now, it would be a great plan. And I think there's some good things have been added to this. What I think is, is um, two things I want to emphasize and. That is the creative economy piece. Um. And I'm glad that's in there and I think that's again, something that is going to be even more important. And when it gets back to that, the thought, the question of kind of the um. You know, what attracts people? What makes a great city? Is it? Um, you know, the, the, the money or the businesses or the talent? And I think it's both. And I think it's more than even just that. It's the other aspects to it, but um. I think in order to have uh, companies come in. You have to have uh, you know, active city and and talent's very important. But just um. You also attract the talent because you have companies that are good to work for. So I think that's, that's a good balance we're putting into this. And uh, without getting in a lot of these other comments have been made, I think you're very good on this. Um. And um, I think to me, the, the, the overriding, I think most important thing is. Uh, as we've talked in towards the end and Deputy Mayor just mentioned some of these. Is the um, the regional part, the collaboration and um. That's going to be, I think, more and more important. Uh, you know, I've talked to, uh, for some time. We were working with Economic Development Council and morphing into. Uh, Greater Seattle Partnership. And then things we're doing with the the Innovation Triangle. And that's, that's gone from a just a very short, you know, a kind of small start to a big start. Having integration, innovation crescent that actually includes a lot more. So. We have concepts and and organizational pieces in place. That can be um. I think expanded so that. And and what happens with that is that Bellevue then becomes really the. The, the, the leader in the region, but because we have these opportunities in the whole region. Um, we can even be more attractive. And I think that's part of what uh. Brings Amazon to us and what also brings these small companies. Um, whether they're tech or otherwise, they come into Bellevue because they want to be a part of this. So I think we put all these elements together. Uh, and I, I think it's um, really strong. Um, and you know, I do think that uh, we, we're going to have yearly reports, quarterly reports, but. Some of other colleagues have mentioned this, I think um. You know, don't hesitate to come. Uh, and sometimes we may want to know something that's going on outside of this particular. Timeframes, but report when something really exciting is going on or if you have questions, it needs to be a very. I think we've established a very collaborative effort by the council. And the staff and and the uh, the city and the organizations that work with us. So I, that's, that's, I think, is a real strength of this whole piece. Um, which will allow us to do uh, what we, we think we can. And as, as we talked in the briefing. I think we have, we're, we're taking advantage of this great opportunity we have. To come out of uh, the COVID uh, pandemic. And um, be ready to go. And I think that's, that's something that a lot of cities just aren't. Uh, either for various reasons, can't focus on it or are focused on that, but I think we're, this, this is a plan that will really. Take us uh, out of that in in very good ways. And. I like the fact that we have a, a great amount of being nimble, being flexible. But at the same time, having a very, very clear, directed. A sense of where we're going, how we're going to get there. And yes, you know, these are just plans and how do we implement them? Uh, and we could spend, you know, probably a week talking about that, but that's kind of your job to. Um, take this, these plans, take the policies. And and put the implementation in place and come back and talk to us about it and how it's going. So. I, I think it's great. I'm uh, really excited about it and be, be interested in seeing how. You know, what changes come up, but I think um. As I said, I think even as it is, is great and we add a, you know, a few tweaks here and there. Uh, it would be even better. And so I'm looking forward to it and appreciate very, very much um. Your focus and recognizing uh, what we can do in Bellevue. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll, I'll give you my comments and then um. Councilmember Lee, I kind of cut you short. I don't know if you had more to say, but I'll give you another chance to finish and anybody else too, but. Um, first of all, just to repeat what other people have said, your, your adjustment to COVID. Coming in the middle of this and adjusting the timeline and the content has been really well done on your part. And it, it makes it still a, a relevant viable strategy. So I appreciate that very much. And um, I have to say. Jesse's responsiveness, Jesse Canedo throughout this whole pandemic to the small business. Struggles and challenges has been remarkable. His one-on-one responsiveness to the businesses and um, his. Uh, partnerships with the Chamber and the BDA and the regional organizations and. Philly, I'm sure you're, you've been involved in that too. I just keep hearing Jesse's name. I'm sorry. But um, it just the whole team, your, your entire, the entire team's responsiveness has been much appreciated by the entire community. Um, I do want to see an actionable item on the local workforce pipeline. You know, you speak to the value of it. You speak to the value of the mature workforce that we have locally. And the need to create a pipeline that develops the future workforce uh, locally. But I don't see any action items on that. So I'd really like to know. I'd like you to drill down on that if you can, um, on how you're going to achieve that. Um. Also want to say that, boy, if the community wonders how we can support our valuable small businesses in Bellevue. It's now. Shop locally. You know, they did war bonds during World War Two. This is kind of similar to that. If you're going to spend money, spend it locally. I call it a COVID Christmas where you buy your gift. Your gift cards today and give them tomorrow. But our local businesses, if you, if you value them and you want them to hang around, you need to support them. Because they need us desperately. So I just want to encourage everybody, wherever you live in Bellevue, to please support your local business. Um, I do like Councilmember Lee and Zan's addition of the multiculturalism. I think that's a very good word. I do like Councilmember Robertson's fifteen minute city idea. That's really attractive to me and I would. Also include growing food. Re- uh, locally, so maybe reactivating some of our historic farmlands would be cool. Uh, I think the childcare language is important. The digital equity, as we just hear time and again, how, how vitally important that is. So partnering with our providers, I think. We need to have somewhat of an actionable item on that as well. So. I know you've gotten a lot of feedback tonight, which I really appreciate and I will actually allow more feedback in just a moment. But really, tonight is not to have you redo everything. Tonight is to have you tweak things. And I think in three months, we get a report back and we can see if we've missed anything or, you know, if anything's working. Isn't that right? I mean, if we get a quarterly. Report on this.
Right, Mayor. So what we would do um. When the council gets ready to adopt the new plan, then you'll see uh, as has been mentioned, metrics that we've been using in the. To, uh, from the previous plan, they're going to carry forward. And then any new metrics, because now there are new topical areas that we are studying and working on.
So I mean, we will have opportunities to assess this plan. And to revise it moving forward in the next few months and years. And so nothing's carved in stone. So I don't want you, there's been some recommendations to add large sections maybe or. Or i- if, if you've heard that, I'm not sure that this is the time to do that, but you should at least be looking at, how can we do that in the near future? If that's truly something we want to do. And I've looked at the desk packet that I think the language that you have written there reflects everything that I'm interested in. And I would just say the one thing that I would like to add is an actionable item on workforce development. So um, why don't we run through really quick, everybody, one more time? We have Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really like what the mayor said, the word actionable items. This is what I already talked about, right? Actionable items. And I'd like to see, you know, that a couple, she mentioned a number of them. And I agree with, I think, all, almost all of them. Uh, even more. I would like to make a couple of addition to it. One external item is this. Multicultural. Thing, because it really emphasized the fact that that's what. You, the staff and the consultant, uh, Tony asked, you know, what's more important, money or people? I think everything's important, no question about it. But if we have to make a choice, a pick. I think people is important. Or the company come here to Bellevue because. They are interested in getting talents. Where they can find people who want to come to work here, to live here. If they cannot find people, the company will not be here. They can't do business. So. It's important for companies with the multicultural workforce that they have to be able to attract talents while comfortable, who's willing. Bellevue is a welcoming city. We need to make it welcoming. Uh, otherwise, people are going to come here. And Amazon's going to come here. Microsoft's moving away. So that's the point. Okay, I'd like to make sure this, the second act- action item is, we talk about. Technology, how can we? Provide our transportation system to utilize technology, autonomous vehicle. Hmm. Elektra, electric car, business, private sectors are working their tail off. You just look at the street stock market, electrical car companies stocks are going like crazy. We need to realize that. That is the future. Okay, so that's beside. And it's transportation system. Transportation is a very important infrastructure to a. And it's transportation system. Transportation is a very important infrastructure to a, a, a work environment. People want to be here because of that, one of that, one of many, but it's important. The third one is working collectively with regional entities such as Greater Seattle Partnership. And others, state and whatever, because it's going, working with them. We actually can change. One of the items specifically I mentioned in my comment to you guys. I have a look at your, your finalized thing that in very details. I don't know whether included or not. You know, it's a way to invest, attract investment capital, is tax incremental financing. Okay, it's a way to get money, which is the scare commodity right now. Everybody's fighting for. And it's a very easy way to attract capital to finance projects. And we need to work with Greater Seattle Partnership, other regional organizations with the state. See how can we change our method of doing business to allow tax incremental financing? These are the regionalism that we're talking about. Okay, so these are the only three things I mentioned, but there are others. I hope I will continue to talk to you. But I would like to see these as actionable items. So that three months from now, whenever, you know, we can see what action have you done? I don't want to wait three months from now, quarterly, say, well, these are the action items to put three months later. Then wait for another three months to come. No, we, I think if it's something that we can actually meet the, the goal that we are setting. Okay, let's do it now. Pick up actionable items and see that we can have happen. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, I like the thought of a connected 15-minute city. With lots of actionable items that we can take care of right away. And especially the workforce development, because I do think that while we appreciate that there are talent that wants to move into our area. We have a lot of very talented people right here in Bellevue. That we want to make sure that we are growing those talents into well-paying jobs in Bellevue. Couple thoughts on the partnership piece. We talked about Greater Seattle Partners and Innovation Triangle. Haven't heard Port of Seattle. And they certainly are the economic engine for King County. So I think we need to be looking at how we leverage that relationship. Especially since they, with Carrie Pravitz, have an East Side liaison outreach person. Now maybe with six months in COVID, it's been hard to connect in that area. But I think for economic development, tourism, that that is an area that our residents pay into the Port of Seattle. We should be looking at how we create value for the East Side with that. And then how we activate Maiden Bar Center might be another area where when I think about the theater, when we reopen. How do we, we activate that space more to have more cultural events and other activities? It sure seems to me that that is an untapped space that we could be leveraging even more. And then I think in a similar theme to Councilmember Lee. I keep thinking about the fact that this plan is amazing. I'm excited about it. It's about talent and jobs and bringing business, big and small, to our community and activating the ones we have. But then we've got to have the transportation infrastructure and we've got to have the affordable housing. Because otherwise, we're going to have this job-housing imbalance and it's going to create even more of an issue for our transportation. So when we get to our budget, I think similar to the task force from BDA and Bellevue Chamber. Really making sure that as we look at our budget, that we are not reducing the amount of capital improvement and investments that we put into the city, because we're absolutely need that in order to make sure that this economic development plan is as successful as possible. So thank you. Super excited. Thank you very much.
Okay, Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks. This has been a great discussion. I think that the, I, the cool council seems very excited about this and, and very supportive. And yeah, I just can't wait to get, move this forward. I just, we are going to see some changes to the plan, right? Based on the comments tonight and the desk packet. Is that right?
Yes, we, we would intend to take the desk packet and move that into the draft plan. And then work on some proposed language based on the conversation tonight to propose as well.
I just wanted to clarify that. I don't, I don't really have anything more to add, so I think I will just say thank you.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Thanks. Just thanks again. I don't have anything for the day. And Tony, thank you as well. I think I left you out of that first. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Nothing more to add. Thanks.
Councilmember Stokes.
Oh, no, I think we've had a really great conversation, brought in some different things. And you know, the 15-minute thing, there've been some interesting articles about that. And I think it's, it's good to have that applied to us here. So one, one comment I did want to make and, and been on the council long enough to know. And through many, many things that we have this tendency to do this is what we're talking about tonight is plans and strategies. And we're, but then we're also talking about, we only, we want plan and strategies. We also want to know action plan. We all know how are you going to do these things? And that's not really the, we're kind of taking like our vision statement, council business statement, our part, our council priorities. And then saying, in addition to that, we want to tell you how, what action plans. And we want action plans for these before we can sign off on the vision statement. So I think we just have to be careful about how much are we going to burden or, or kind of weigh down? The, the plan and strategies with action items, which probably aren't quite always baked. Because we have to take the plan and, and work on that and the strategies and then start developing the action items. So I see that as a separate piece and we, we, and that's, that's really a staff function to come up with the strategy. Their, their job is to take the plan that we adopt and the strategies as a policy. And then put that into action, come back to us and talk about it. But I think what can happen is it gets so bulky and this whole big piece we have together is hard to. And then it's really hard to come back and say, are you doing this or not? Because it's gotten so kind of puffed out a little bit. That's my concern, I, I think. Because a lot of, some of the conversation we've had is about, well, how are you going to do this specific? Is it going to be five people doing this or 10? Are you going to use this or that? So we have to be careful of that. So I, I would prefer to see what we have here. Without adding a lot of detail or how you're going to do these things into this. Have this plan and then, then staff comes back and says, this is how we're going to implement it. So I think that's an important part in terms of how the, the balance and how we actually get work done. But otherwise, I think it's really great. I think it's great work and I'm, I think it's what we need to come out of, of the COVID. And how we need going forward to. And it's also answering the challenge of almost being overwhelmed in a good way by Amazon and, and, and Google. And others coming in and already doing things. So how do we, how do we take that and make that work for the rest of the city? I think it's important. And that's why a lot of the comments about local businesses and the neighborhoods and all those things are important too. So I, I think it's a great plan. I think it's great strategies and I just, I just don't want to get us. And if we start getting to the action items, then we have to go back on each one of these and come up with them, not just the few scattered here and there. So that's my only concern at this point. So I would like to see it come back, the strategies and the plan and adopt that. And then we have these conversations about what actions are we going to do? How are we going to do the things? But.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. So I think you've heard some, you know, comments on the draft plan that you've given. And some of it's wordsmithing, some of it's adding some language. A lot of it's talking about what you've put in the packet tonight and it's giving it a thumbs up. And then some of it is kind of things we'd like to see a little more of. And maybe that's not for this plan, but maybe that's in three months or something that we start incorporating a little more of what some of us have brought up. I do, I'm going to defend my actionable items for the workforce development. Because I don't see any idea of how that's going to happen in this plan. So I don't need specifics, but I'd like to see something of how that's going to go down. But I think that Mr. Miyaki.
Go ahead. Once you're done, if I could ask a question.
Okay, so yeah, so you know, I think that if we, if people want to meet with you before the next meeting on this. They should have the opportunity to see in advance what this is going to look like. And I think you've, you're just very close to being there. And I appreciate the opportunity to weigh in and have this conversation. And, and the dialogue tonight's been really helpful. And Tony, thank you for all the help that you and your team have done with the city of Bellevue. It's just amazing to me that you can come from a completely different city and really get to know our community in a time of crisis. And, and guide us through as well as you have. So thank you for that. So that's all I have to say. Mr. Miyaki.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I guess it's the question I like to always ask of some of the staff, Mac and team. If you could articulate what the next steps or what the plan is moving forward. As well as I would like to get your take of any issues you have moving forward or any concerns. Mac?
Yeah, thanks, Senator Miyaki. Yeah, I, I feel pretty good about being clear on, on the council individually and collectively. On a few of the things that you've brought up here tonight. I think just to shed a little bit of light on the last kind of round robin discussion about actionable items. The way we would intend to bring those back to you is to make sure there are direct strategies or tactics that address those items. And not say exactly how many staff are dedicated or how many hours were, those are all part of work plans that we work on as part of our quarterly and annual updates. But I think just to bridge that gap, we'll go back and take the comments around, is this a concept that can be implemented? In the Economic Development Strategic Plan? If the answer is yes, then it's appropriately addressed in the plan. And we'll bring all those items back to you. And so we heard a couple and, and Mayor just mentioned workforce. We'll make sure there's an actionable item that's implementable in the plan without saying exactly what's going to happen year to year with that strategy.
Terrific. I think you hit it well. So thank you. Looking forward to that next meeting, looking forward to a staff brief, briefing before. And thank you for all your good work.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I think we've come to the end of the meeting. So thank you, everybody. Meeting's adjourned.